Good morning. I would like to call to order the adjourned regular meeting and special meeting noticed for today. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under one law, the liberty of the people.
May we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Rami?
Here.
Councilmember Udi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
Here.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Present. Thank you. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crow Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead. Ms. Louise Cook?
Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I'm so sorry. As you're coming forward, I'd like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how the public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. You'll accept comments in three ways. We'll take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a countdown timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of their remaining time to speak. You will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you'd like to speak on this particular agenda item. Finally, I will read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day before Friday's city council meetings for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day before Friday's city council meeting will be included in the public comment record but will not be read after meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies for speakers.
Go ahead.
Might you please say?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Louise Cook, and I've lived in San Marino for 49 years. I come here this morning under difficult circumstances, as you can see, but I, so I need to be frank and to the point. In just a few weeks, our city runs the risk of losing half of its police department. And under the current plan to replace officers, the city is going to bring in outside people from the LA County Sheriff's Department or maybe contract out to surrounding cities. And I want you to think of what that means. These outside police are not familiar with the community policing that's practiced here in San Marino. Our residents place a very high priority on both the fire department and the police department. We vote for a parcel tax to provide for the police department's needs, and in turn, they respond year after year. Quickly, we don't wait for two and a half hours. They respond with professionalism and most of all, with a genuine spirit of caring. Outside police do not have a vested interest in San Marino. It's just a second job for them. And what truly concerns me is they could bring in a different mindset of the way they police. And we all know what's going on currently with the LA County Sheriff's Department's issue with the use of excessive force. So if they bring in a different mindset, how will they react and, you know, and interact with our citizens here? Now, all of this has come to pass because of the crisis this is here, because of a mandatory vaccination policy that does not allow our officers to test as an alternative. That's all they are asking for. Since last September, when this went into effect, data has changed. Hunting to the hospital right now does allow unvaccinated doctors to perform surgery as long as they test negative 48 hours prior to the operation. And infectious disease specialists have told us now repeatedly that in, under circumstances such as we have, testing every 72 hours meets best practices. So I urgently-
Would you please wrap up with your last few sentences? The time is complete. If you can just give us your final closing.
Okay, I'm just gonna say that, just know that I do understand your challenges that you face. Just because I'm a retired businesswoman, vice president of a major company, and I know that in order to succeed, we need to be flexible. That's all I'm asking for. And I really want to thank you for the work that you're all doing. I've come here to thank you for that. Just know that I do appreciate the challenges that you face. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And thank you for coming. Thank you. Is there anybody else present wishing to speak? Seeing none, is there anybody who virtually would like to share their thoughts on any issues?
I do not have any raised hands, so I'm not seeing any requests for comment at this time.
And no additional correspondence. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion and a second to wait for the readings?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
Yeah.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to move on now to new business and return to item one of the regular meeting agenda, and that is the preview of the draft 2223 Capital Improvement Plan and five-year forecast. Prior to a staff report from Director Throne, I believe City Manager Marlowe has some opening remarks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. We are here to continue our budget process for fiscal year 2223. We've had several meetings so far, and we are currently right in the middle of our capital presentation. So the CIP is divided into essentially two programs. There is the equipment portion, and there is the construction portion. So we dealt with the equipment portion last week. Thank you very much for that special meeting. And we are here today to address the other half, which is construction. We tried to set up your report so that it would be user-friendly. This is a lot of information, and so it may be a hopeless task to try to make this user-friendly. But what we have done is attempted to focus your attention on Attachment Six, which is pages 79 through 91. Those are the new programs that we're proposing for next year that we are looking for you to comment on and affirm or pull out. The other sections do deal with next year's budget, but they are either projects that are multi-year, that we do every year, or projects that started this year that still need to roll into next year, or projects that you already approved for this year, but we just weren't able to get started and that we would like to rebudget again for next year. So the meat of your discussion today hopefully will focus on that Attachment Six. And so that is what we are here today to do. In the future, in April, we have meetings set up for you to review the draft departmental budgets, the draft operating budget. We have a special meeting on April 22nd where we'll give you half of the departments. That's a Friday. And then you have your regular meeting, as you know, on April 29th, which is the next Friday, to finish up the operating budget. And that is per the budget calendar that we've been discussing with you for the last several months. So that'll be the next step, today's capital. And then, of course, the only other thing to mention about today is that this is our last meeting with Parks and Public Works Director, City Engineer Michael Throne. As you all know, he is going down to the San Diego area to lead the City of La Mesa's Public Works Department. And of course, he does own property down in San Diego County, and we have been very lucky that he has spent time with us for the last four and a half years up here as our public works director. He has built this CIP. We did not have one before, and we are very grateful for his efforts, and I'm very grateful for his partnership. And so this is my opportunity to say thank you to Michael. We will miss you and wish you all of the best of luck. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to him for what is likely to be his final presentation to us.
Thank you, Dr. Marlowe. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present our recommendations for capital construction expenditures for next fiscal year. To briefly recap capital construction, those are those actions to build something that costs more than $5,000 and/or has a lifespan of more than a year. Capital costs also include design and environmental activities. I would like to take a few moments to walk you through the capital plan document before you. As we discussed last Friday, the actual final plan will be organized by infrastructure category. However, for budget discussion purposes, the city manager and I have organized it into annual recurring expenditures, reappropriations, rebudgets, new projects, and projects for future years. And as the manager did remark, new projects may be the place that you would want to start. I would like to mention that the security gate improvement that's described on page 86 of your agenda packet was inadvertently included in your plan for next fiscal year. It is more properly discussed as part of Agenda Item Number Two this morning. Last month, information was shared to the Public Safety Commission and the city council that Metro had directed their staff to ask if we would like to modify or measure our projects to include mobility features. Mobility features include on-street bus infrastructure, Class 1, 2, 3, or 4 bikeways, and sidewalk and pedestrian improvements. Metro indicated that there would be no new additional funding to include these kinds of items into our projects. Excluding the transit and bike features, the two projects you have already conceptually agreed upon already include pedestrian and sidewalk improvements. Consequently, we believe no action is required by the council to modify our projects based on this change by Metro unless council is interested in including transit and biking features. In that circumstance, the department suggests that the council revisit the projects at a later date and use a community engagement process similar to what we used in 2019. As the city manager indicated in her remarks, the council can elect to go page by page to review the proposals. As you review it, Dr. Marlowe and I look for your direction and guidance for the proposed fiscal year 202223 expenditures. We're also seeking your guidance on any expenditures you would like to move up from future years into next fiscal year. And conversely, you can also move a fiscal year 2223 proposal to a future year. To conclude, I would like to thank Management Analyst Baumann for his excellent work on his first capital improvement plan. And I would again like to thank the council for entrusting me with running your CIP factory and having the opportunity to deliver projects to the community. At this point, this concludes the staff presentation. It's back to you, Madam Mayor. The first capital construction item begins on page 47. That's, that is recurring, although you may go anywhere you would like in the document.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Before we begin, I'm going to ask if there are any general nonspecific questions from council. Councilwoman Shepard Rami, any general questions?
Yeah, I wanted to make an observation. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that the discussion, whatever we might have about Metro and its current change vis-à-vis some of the plans and our existing plans, as well as the money that we formally rejected, I believe we should push that off and have a briefing and make that a specific item because it's not really anywhere in this, and I don't want it to get lost. But I do think we need an update to understand what has changed, not, you know, a spoken report, but just what the various metro positions are vis-à-vis the three things, and if there's still an opportunity to get any money and use that money differently, such as planning, et cetera. So I would like that to be a separate item, and I know it was wrapped into this, but I don't see anything about it in writing here.
So are you recommending a more detailed briefing today?
No, at a later date. It's fine with me. It should be an agendized item, and there should be information for our residents because, as we know, this is something that a lot of people care dearly about, and there should be a great degree of transparency because this will affect our entire city. Those projects will.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Udi, any nonspecific questions?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
No, although I agree with Councilmember Rami on the need to have a separate meeting, and I'm saying that without agreeing to any of the other comments you made.
Okay, thank you. Does, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment at this point?
Let me give an opportunity for those on Zoom to raise their hands.
No, it looks like no public comments.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's break this down into manageable parts. So why don't we turn to Attachment Three, which is pages 47 through 59 of our packet? These are our annual ongoing CIP projects. I'm going to ask in broad terms, so council members, I'll just ask you to signal. Does anyone want to discuss any of these items?
From here until the end?
The pages that I just-
I'm sorry, where did you, I heard 47.
Forty-seven through fifty-nine. And I will give you a few minutes to review any of your notes that you have from that section. And then when we either speak or are ready, we will move on.
I had, I do have a few questions in this section. Sorry, but they were in the, I marked them on the prior because these are kind of repeated from before. So-
Sure.
Go ahead. I just didn't see it in this. I don't know where, if it's in the pages that you just indicated, but are we discussing later the original Lacy Park restroom renovation?
I believe so. That's later.
That's in the second group? Okay, so then I'll pass on that. I had a question about, so just going in order of what I can see here quickly.
Sure.
Is the tree management plan, we still have $50,000 in this, and I know that we've entered into a contract with Mariposa for a significant, their management of our trees. So I just wanted to know, is this, this is in addition to the Mariposa, and it covers what additional things?
Could you cite the page, please?
Forty-eight. Thank you.
Oh, am I in the wrong section again? You're, you're right.
You're correct. This is the capital funding source for the planting program that's included in the Mariposa landscaping agreement. So of that agreement, there's a certain amount that's operating cost. This is the, this is a $50,000 capital expenditure that they would be performing on behalf of the city. That's why it's included here.
So it's for, specifically for planting city trees or trees in, on city areas, medians, the parkways along the streets, residential areas, as well as a park?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the same amount that we've been doing for the last several years?
Yes.
And did they, last question, did they, during your review of their proposal, which we approved, did they suggest that we would be able to meet our current needs because we do have more removals? I think we're averaging about 60 or 70 tree removals a year. Will this meet, we've gone up, in other words, from the 40 or 50. So will this meet our city's needs, or do we ever have to look at revising this number?
You may want to look at revising this number in future years, but currently it does satisfy our needs that we are planning for, plus a little bit of extra.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Do you want me to keep going, or does anybody-
In this section, go ahead. We'll go.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else has questions about that. Page 54 in this section, which was page 15 in the prior section, I questioned the cost of $20,000 to do a biannual inspection of our city-owned bridges because the Circle Drive one is, I don't even think, five years old and is, was a massive public works structure. And I do not know when the Lorraine Road over the, if you will, the waterway, I don't know what you call the wash down there is what I would refer to it as, but I'm sure it has a better technical name. I would like to know if we could push this off to a later year or why we're doing this at this time.
This is opportune time to have a bridge maintenance program established for us so that in the future, we can program operating costs to keep bridge maintenance current. The Lorraine Road Rubio Wash Bridge, we've really only know about it because Caltrans sends us a report every couple of years and says, you need to do these things to repair it. But we don't have anything that's systematic and programmed for us to take care of these two bridges. The bridges last, you know, a solid hundred years, but as they get closer to their age, they start to experience problems that we could have caught early. And so with the Circle Drive Bridge, that's a relatively new bridge. This is the time to start paying attention to it, having a long-term program that evolves with the age of the bridge, and then also for us to be able to catch up on the Lorraine Road Bridge.
So just to follow up on that, my understanding, and as you mentioned, Caltrans basically has ownership of these things, or at least in a large part, they funded the Circle Drive. And I believe as part of the county watershed system also monitors Rubio Wash and therefore the Lorraine Road Bridge, if you will. And so I think it would be redundant and expensive for us to repeat what the county already has, both of these within their purview of monitoring and maintenance, even if the ultimate cost comes down to the city to, or the, to perform the work and hire a contractor to do that. Is that correct, my understanding?
Caltrans performs bridge inspections as a service provided to all jurisdictions in the state of California. So they come out-
I'm sorry, I said county.
And they, they do the inspection. They leave it to the city who owns the facilities to do something with it. So our approach is that because Circle Drive is a new bridge, now's the time to start planning ahead and being aware of where it may have problems in the future. And with the Lorraine Bridge, because it is probably as seriously 70 years old, we need to have a plan as to not just wait around every two years for Caltrans to give us a list of to-dos, but also start thinking ahead to that point in time when the county's going to come to us and say, your bridge is endangering our wash. You need to do something today. I don't necessarily want to be in that position in, in five or 10 years. That's really deferred maintenance, and we've been very good about capturing that by doing condition assessments. This is sort of taking a condition assessment that's performed for the city pro bono by Caltrans and then acting on it by having a plan established for it. And that's what these ones would do for us.
So this is not for the condition assessment? I thought this was for a condition assessment that are done by Caltrans.
This is for a planning document, a planning, an operations and maintenance document to how, how should we be managing these two bridges over the course of their, one, the rest of its life, and the other one for another 80, 90 years?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Udi, pages 47 through 59, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tolts?
I'm sorry, was Councilmember Shepard Rami done with this area?
I, thank you for asking. I, I am, I will discuss the bridge later.
Okay.
Bridges later. Thank you.
No, I do not have any questions.
And I do not have any either. Thank you. Okay, so next, let's turn to Attachment Four, pages 63 through 70 of the agenda packet. These are items that have been started but are not, won't be completed by the end of the fiscal year, so the money will be needed to carry over. Does anyone want to discuss any of these items? I will give you a few minutes to look over pages 63 through 70. Councilmember Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
Yes, I have questions. Thank you. The first item I want to ask about on page 63 is the citywide traffic circulation study. And I know we've spent so much money with TransTech and ITRIS and various contractors to try to figure out. And it's also, there's traffic calming measures in another section, which I guess is along a similar line. So I wanted to know, what is this for and who is it to, and what additional services does it encompass?
This is to complete the traffic circulation study that's being performed by ITRIS. It was brought to council at the end of last year. The council had some asks that we would bring back to ITRIS. We just completed at the end of February a citywide traffic survey to residents, and we're compiling those results. This is just a reappropriation so that we can, when ITRIS bills us for the work that's being done, that we have funding to pay for it. This does not increase their contract in any way, shape, or form, nor add, nor expands their scope of work. It basically are, is the monies that are there for them to complete the scope of work that the, that the council requested back toward the end of last year that they perform. So this is just really from a budgeting perspective, making sure that there's funding there for them to be paid for the work that they are, have been contracted to do.
All right. So just to clarify, so the, the 105, 106,000 that we paid last year along with this, almost 64,000 together, is not properly reflected in the five-year total. So I'm confused as to what their contract amount was. Was it the two combined? Or is this some total, that's why it looks like it's additional, if you understand the way it's written this way?
The, the only disadvantage of using this form in this fashion is that when you have projects that are not complete, when you rebudget and you do the math, the five-year totals, it, it doesn't make sense. The most that we are going to pay ITRIS is $105,000. Hundred, they've spent about $40,000 of their $150,000 contract. We owe them $105,000. That was what we budgeted for last year. Between last year and now, they spent approximately $40,000. So the 63 is what remains on their contract out of the 150,000.
You lost me there in the middle because it did sound like we were paying them extra.
We're not paying them extra. I think that maybe that the main point is we're not paying them extra. And because this is a project that was incomplete.
No, I understand.
There's still work that needs to be done. The most that we're going to pay them next fiscal year will be $63,000 because they will have already expensed the rest of it in the prior two fiscal years.
If I may just add one sentence. The column on the left is the budget amount, not the expenditure amount. So we budgeted 105 last year, but we didn't spend 105. We will only spend 105 in total.
In total?
Yes. With the 105, eight.
Right.
Fourteen.
Eight, fourteen. So that is the contract amount, and the contract amount is not 150?
No.
Or is the contract-
The contract, yeah. Because there's a prior fiscal year that doesn't show up on this. So because we-
Even before.
Before.
The cost of 2020 to 2021.
Yes.
Yes.
Already. So then would the, okay.
Okay, the 105 is what was remaining after that year, and now we're going to have this 63 for this year. But because the way this particular spreadsheet works, it doesn't go back beyond this current year.
All right. So it's within the budget contracted amount that we agreed to at the beginning, I guess, is the ultimate point, and we are not paying them additional in any way.
Not a penny more.
Thank you. That is a very clear answer, and I will look at the bottom of that chart. Okay, thank you. My next question is on, unless anybody else has something else about that. Okay, thank you. My next question is on, unless anybody else has something else about that. The next question I have is on page 68. And this is a more difficult discussion about the San Marino Center. And trying to understand. Where we are now. And how we got there. I think that. The actual for, you're saying for last year was 830,000. And I gather those payments were all to Crane as well as the subcontractors that were hired. By Crane and, and to do the. Draft sequo analysis, if I could put it that way. And so, but we still have ongoing costs. I assume regarding. Design features and things of that nature that we're paying. This year because Crane is continuing to do their work. We don't have the final before us. I know I, the committee has seen things, but as city council and the community has not seen anything since. The change was made. Because we had to protect the exterior in its present form to a large degree because of the historical resources. A report came back that that was to be preserved in order to conform with the California requirements. So I'm trying to figure out. How we got to 6 million? And in the end, we're almost at 7 million for a project that we originally. Thought was a renovation that would cost three and a half to four. And I'm concerned because. Even spending $4 million necessitates a lot of. Capital for the city when we have aging infrastructure and a lot of other expenses that to me are much more pressing. But agreeing to do that and now knowing that we're at 7 million and we have yet to go out to bid. And I just don't think that the people of San Marino, the residents are aware. And are willing to write such a blank check that keeps going up and up every time. We're here together and have an update that the amount increases so dramatically.
Do you have a question for?
Yes, what, why is it not the original amount? Now it's 6 million. So the construction cost has increased from 38 to $5 million, not to mention another million for the other.
The short answer is that this is just a budget number because we need to have a placeholder in the budget. We don't have the final construction estimate, and so we just need a number to put in the budget. The 6 million is a round number that seems like it might be right at this point. So that's what's in here for now. You'll get revised numbers as soon as we have them. And the real moment when we know what we're talking about is when we actually get bids. And that won't happen until next fiscal year. At that point. If God forbid, it was higher than this, you would need to make a decision about whether to appropriate additional information. If it's less than this, then it would be less than this. But for budgeting purposes, we just need to have something to put in as a placeholder.
Well, shouldn't we, if it's just for budgeting purposes, shouldn't we just carry forward the same number? That we had in the past because we haven't yet approved an increase and this is effectively increasing it.
I don't think there's necessarily a right way to handle this. If you're more comfortable with a different number, I think that's fine. Again, we'll be coming to you with the real number when we have it. And if an appropriation is necessary at that time, we would ask for it. So it's really the comfort of the council.
Well, again, I don't want to vote down a whole budget over this, which I did last year because of this matter. But continuing to increase it bit by bit seems to me deceptive for our residents. That we are now increasing the budget with no explanation and no. I guess financial estimate by any professionals to give us a reason to increase it. So I would not support this if we continue to increase this amount without having a discussion in public about what it's for. Those are all my, I don't think this counts as carrying forward then. I think this should be in another section called new. Because we're not carrying forward the same numbers. So I don't agree with the budget process if we don't do that.
Do you have any additional questions on pages 63 through 70?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Councilmember Udi?
I do not have any questions.
Vice Mayor Tom?
We expect as a result of the delay occasioned by a variety of factors, there would be an increase in construction costs. Especially given the cost of lumber and so forth. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Okay.
I was speaking as to. An item on page 68.
Yes. Okay, and I have no questions and I thank you for the work on this section. So let's move on to attachment five, pages 73 through 75. Those are items that we approved last year and weren't started. And are being rebudgeted for next year. Those are just one, two, three items there. Councilmember Udi, any questions?
Your recommendation, the, on page 74, the Huntington Drive and Mission Street beautification program for a million dollars. Was originally envisioned to support the economic development activities. And being part of that group and committee that's now kind of disbanded. You know, I, I, we didn't have a good, you know. Answer on how to best invest that money. So I think we should just remove that from the, the budget until a good idea comes up.
Okay, so Dr. Marlowe, would that be something we would be acting on at a future point with Councilmember Udi's recommendation?
I think some discussion, some comments are blending right now. If you as a group wanted to remove this, we would remove this. I would just remind you, not that this means we can't do it, but where we left this was we had some design options presented for mission. And the council's will was to, instead of making decisions on what to spend on mission. You wanted to know what it would look like if we did the same design options on Huntington. So the last piece of direction before our prior director left was to go out and get design options for Huntington. So that would be the project that we would be moving to next. If we removed this from the budget, we would just not pursue that. We would still have those options for mission if at some point you wanted to go back to them.
Thank you. I, I would concur in possibly holding a little longer on that money. We are regrouping with community development. Anything further you wish to say? Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Shepherd Rami?
Right, um. No, I just, as to page 73, which is the Metro Measure R 710 North Projects, which I guess it was touched on. In the discussion earlier, I just, I don't mind carrying forward the initial cost. But part of what. I understand might this. I guess analysis, whatever the 330, 335,000. Is for design. And is it my understanding that now we could possibly get that covered by metro, essentially reimbursed would probably be. I don't know what the technical term is. Because they've changed, my understanding from the resident and listening to the discussion of the Metro Board. They've changed in that other cities, allowing other cities as well as verbally agreed. That the metro money can be used for planning and development of design, et cetera.
That is correct and it always was anticipated that the city would spend none of its own dollars to do these projects. That's why you, you see in the form there under our, our capital program, there's no capital dollars from us. It's pure Metro Measure R dollars.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And so I understand this would be. The, the use of the 335 to start the analysis or to continue, and I think some initial work was done, but we just had very preliminary. Drawings. So this would go toward employing a consulting firm in order to further develop plans along the Huntington Drive corridor, et cetera?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anything further?
I would like to keep on page 74, at least some of that budget in place. Because I do think there were some changes that the mission. Area could. Get behind. And I think we just needed to come back with some more work on that. So I'm hoping that it will be done and that we'll move forward then on also along some improvements for Huntington Drive. That's all of my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tom?
I have no questions.
Thank you. I just have one or two quick questions on page 75, the library work. We do have confirmation that that donation amount is currently still available, correct? The 22,500 toward that project?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good year.
I'd like to keep them.
Director Tom has waited. Also to comment on the Economic Development Fund. I know previously this, as a side note, we had allocated some money for those businesses seeking. License to serve alcohol. And I believe we had an incentive program that used some of that money. And I would like us to keep the option open of possibly reopening that after we are fully done with COVID. So I think we have covered all.
So Mayor, now that we're kind of halfway through and I'm getting a sense of how this discussion is going. I might make a request for a process adjustment so that we don't have to go through all of these again. There have been a couple that do not have unanimous support. I know that we thought we were kind of in the question stage right now, but it, I might suggest maybe just stopping now and asking for public comment. And then coming back and let's go back over the ones before. It sounds like there was some disagreement on the San Marino Center. On the bridge program and then on this economic development one. We could do a straw poll and decide if they're staying in so that we don't then have to go back and re-go through every one of these pages. When I've forgotten where the disagreement was. Is that, is that acceptable?
Certainly.
Okay, so maybe we stop any public comments and then we can come back.
Certainly. Are there any comments at this point?
Let me give the folks on Zoom.
Certainly.
I'm not seeing any raised hands, so no.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go back to the bridge item. And that was presented in.
That would be page 54.
Thank you. And basically at this point, all we're looking to do is to see if we want to carry that forward. Or for this proposed budget year or not.
I'm, I'm appreciate what you're trying to do, but. By not asking questions, the assumption is then we have an approval. That's, that's not what was originally intended, although I have, if I, if I had a question. Or if I didn't want to approve, but I asked a question about it. So when you say that we're just going back to approve this one.
Do you have further questions?
I, I have no further questions, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I have approved everything that I, everything else in here.
That's actually my, that's my apology.
Objections, I just want to make sure that everybody.
No, I appreciate that. I didn't think about that either. So thank you. So I think, Mayor, the question when you get to each section is, we had some discussion on the bridge. We could talk about the bridge and then are there any other items that you would like to pull out?
Okay, so you would like to, beyond those three, we will ask if there are any items that council members would like.
Yes, I don't think you need to go through them one at a time, but so for example, for this attachment three. I would suggest you start with the bridge programs since we already knew that there was some disagreement there. Get a straw vote on that and then just ask if anybody wants to pull any other item in this section.
Okay, is that acceptable, Vice Mayor?
It, well, because it's, it's a tacit approval and, but we're not doing anything legally at this point. Okay.
And if you want to pull it off, you could do your straw poll today and then we would pull it out. If you leave it in, obviously you'll get it again when we give you the full budget.
That's fine. That, that's, that's fine. Okay.
Sorry, confused. Please give me specific direction. I will do whatever is.
Okay, so councilmembers, why don't I ask you? There was some disagreement on the bridge maintenance program, which is on page 54. If we could just do a straw poll, whether to keep it in the budget as it is or remove it for this year.
Okay, start there. Sure. All of those in favor of keeping that in the budget for this year, please signify by raising your hand, paw, whatever. Those opposed? Okay, okay, thank you very much. And then the next question would be then therefore for the remainder of attachment three. Are there any other items in here that any council?
Wait, why don't you give us a page range? Because there's a lot of.
Sure.
Page, and I'm not even sure where it touches.
Yes, no problems.
Page, page 47 through 59.
Thank you.
Are there any others in this section that any of you would like to remove from the budget?
Well, I only had one question. Well, I should have asked this in question time. But the police station utilization study. We have it in the budget for this year, but then there's a zero for next year. And I'm just wondering, do we? It's, but this is, these are things that are ongoing, so we may need to. Have money in next year for them to finish their work because I assume this is underway right now. But we won't necessarily get all of the invoices, if you will, or, or I don't know the technical language at the city. All before June 30, right? Which is the year end. So this to me stuck out as, why is there zero? I know it's, we approved it and it's, it's, I assume going forward. But the amount won't be spent within last, the current fiscal year. We will need, it will continue into July and thereafter, I'm assuming, or am I wrong?
You are correct. We expect it to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. And there'll probably be some invoices that will still be needed to be paid, but those will really occur in July. That's still part of. This fiscal year budget, correct? So we would not really need to reappropriate for that?
When, when invoices don't come in by June 30th, what we in finance do is recruit those expenses. Because we know those expenses are coming and we charge it to the current fiscal year and won't be charged to the next fiscal year.
All right. So then you first see this being completed in essence in the same year.
It'll be 21, 22 this quarter.
Yes, okay. Thank you. That was my only concern with the existing.
Okay, are we set on this section? Yes. Okay, okay, then we move to attachment four, which is pages 63 through 70. And although we had questions on the citywide traffic circulation study, I think your questions were answered, Councilmember Shepherd Rami, and you were okay with this one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so then the only item where there was disagreement was the San Marino Center renovation. So let's start there. If you will, and what, what we need is a straw poll on whether to keep this item in as it is or remove it. Although Councilmember Shepherd Rami did offer a third option, which was to change the amount. So I guess a straw poll on those.
Can I ask you, can I ask one question? Of course. The next page after, also dealing with the traffic calming measures. Did we spend any money? That would be page 64, I'm sorry, of our binder. On the bottom of the 200. That is a neighborhood ta, traffic calming. And I see that we had 75,000 budgeted for last year. So is this amount just carried over? Do we have any expenses? Do we do anything in this regard?
Yes, actually we did. Some of the striping and signing that we've done that was not associated with our annual program. We, that, that was traffic calming related, we did charge that. So we probably charged about $10,000.
Bottom 44,000, what's that?
Oh, 4,070. That was the total expense for last year?
For this current fiscal year.
I, I'm sorry, for the current fiscal year that we're in. Thank you.
Okay, so returning to the San Marino Center renovation on page 68. Keep it in as it is, remove it altogether or lower the amount back to what it was last year. I think that those are your three options, Mayor, if you would pull your call.
How many would like to keep it as it is? How many would like to lower the amount? Remove it? Okay.
I could vote for both of those.
I was giving you that option.
I, I was being diplomatic and just saying, carry the cost forward before.
Very gracious.
I, I have noted your double vote.
Very gracious. All right.
Yeah, can I be Steve?
Yeah.
I don't have that many arms, but he probably has the same concerns that I do and shares my viewpoint.
All right. So then the next question then, Mayor, is for the rest of that section, pages 63 through 70. Does anybody wish to suggest removing any other item?
No.
That's one.
Councilmembers, any, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, moving along.
Moving on. So now we are at attachment five, which is pages seventy-three through seventy-five. These are the three items, the metro, the beautification program, and the computer room renovation. I heard some discussion on metro, but I didn't hear anybody suggest removing it. So I'm just going to go directly to page seventy-four, the Huntington Drive and Mission Street Beautification Program. I heard a request from Councilmember Udi to remove this from the budget. So this would be a keep or remove straw poll, Mayor.
Okay, so when you say keep or remove, we would then not be, we would not be doing it at all, or we would not be doing it through this budget line?
It's likely if you remove this from the budget, we would not be doing it at all. If in a subsequent council meeting you directed us to go do this, we would bring you back an appropriation.
Got it. Okay, so those in favor of removing it?
Removing, I'm sorry, what one?
Removing page seventy-four and pushing it to a future year. The beautification.
Okay. Okay. Are we saying we are or we're not?
We are asking those who wish to remove it. We have one vote, and then we will ask for those who wish to keep it. Okay, okay, who's in favor of keeping it? Okay, I think we have the direction on that.
All right, and then to finish up this section, there is metro on page seventy-three and the computer room renovation on page seventy-five. Did anybody wish to suggest removing either of those? Seeing nothing? All right, Mayor, we have caught up, and now we are at the meat of the discussion. So you are now at attachment six. These are your proposed new items, your year one proposed items. In other words, this is pages seventy-nine through ninety-one. As Director Throne has pointed out, what's the page number that comes up?
Eighty-six.
Page eighty-six was erroneously included, so we can skip that. Because these are new proposed programs, my suggestion to you is probably that you go through these a page at a time. And for efficiency purposes, I'd suggest you do a round of questions, and then let's just do a round of comments and straw polling right off the bat. Thank you. I'm happy to turn the meeting back over to you, Mayor.
You're doing great. It's all yours. All right, let's start then with page. Let's see, where are we? Page seventy-nine, and that is the alley and parking lot improvement program. Starting with questions, Councilmember Udi.
No questions.
Councilwoman Shepherd Romy.
My question is only, is it possible to get a detail of what's included? Because I know we have some private parking lots that seem to be city almost, like where is Old Mill? Is it Old Mill? No. Oak Mill? Old Mill, Old Mill Road, the one behind some businesses there. And I've been asked if that, as well as the one that's behind what used to be Women's World, I don't know the name of the gym. I don't know which areas are included, city property, and which belong. Some of those parking lots adjacent to the alleys are covered by the city and this project. So I wanted, so residents that live near some of those spaces and the business owners have asked me, is there those areas behind some of those businesses going to be included? Like, what is included of those lots? So I just wanted a visual so I can help the community know when they ask me questions as to which are private property in which the city is going to undertake in this project. Is that possible to give us a diagram or?
Yes, absolutely. It was included in your recently adopted pavement management plan, but I can get you a copy to the council as to the where the seven parking lots are and where the alleys are that the city own.
Okay, that would be huge. If you could just forward that to me, then I can pass that information on to community members. And I'd appreciate that if we could make it more easily available to some of them who want to know what's going on near them, you know. Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tom?
Did Councilman Udi have no question?
I had no question.
Okay, the only question I have, and it may be more in a comment, and that is we have to be very careful with the timing of this, especially in the North Alley, the alley north of Huntington, behind Wells Fargo, it goes in the school. That could only be done in the middle of the summer, because otherwise you've got a lot of students and parents using that to deliver people to the high school.
And the move out of the grad night, et cetera. So it's a sensitive time area for many things in particular, so that one area needs additional focus.
I didn't want to say that because I'm a member of the old guard, but.
Well, she said it for you.
I said it for you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Honorary member that I am.
Are there any comments? Councilwoman Shepherd Romy, before we do our poll?
No, I I'm in support of this, and I appreciate adding this into our pavement program. I think it's important, and I just wanted a visual. So some people have heard about it and are also supportive. So thank you for bringing this forward, Director Throne.
Councilmember Udi?
Makes sense. I mean, it's fifty thousand this year, and it's something that needs to be done.
Sure. Vice Mayor?
I have, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, and I also believe that some of our alleyways in particular are in pretty deplorable shape. Straw poll, those in favor?
Aye.
For, thank you. Next item is, next item is the corner of Huntington Sierra Madre. And the only reason that I'm jumping in is I do just want to draw your attention that although it is not, they are not dependent on each other, it does tie to page.
The renovation.
Yeah. Eighty-nine, which is the Holiday House Restoration. We are proposing both in this year. You could do one without the, you could do either one without the other, but there is some efficiency involved in doing them at the same time, so the design of each could take the other into account. So just, they're not dependent on each other, but they do have a relationship, so I just wanted to like that. Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd Romy, any questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just so I understand, this is which is proposed for next year would be twenty thousand for a design of a new landscaping plan for that area? And does it include removal of the house or whatever the structure is there? And the associated things and the trees, I don't know what, I have no idea what the vision is. I've not seen, I know we're just starting this process. Hopefully, we are now. So I'm trying to figure out what that would encompass. What is even, are we telling a consultant as to that location?
So we would be hiring a landscape architect to design improvements that not only conform to the grant, but also conform to what the community envisions for it. So I would totally expect telling the consultant that, come up with all kinds of great designs, the building stays, and then they just work around it.
All right, so have we had a community meeting, or have we had a survey or gathered comments from either residents or businesses in the area on this? Have we done any polling as to what is in, people want for that area, if anything?
Well, regarding the building, we have lots of anecdotal information about preservation of it and its condition. So we're very solid there. Part of hiring a landscape architect would be that firm would facilitate those discussions, and we would put into their scope of work that they would do community meetings and engage the public in in the ways that we like to do it here in order to flesh out what that plan would be.
So I take it from that, that we've gathered no community input today as to whether this project is even something of interest to the residents or to the businesses in that area?
I do believe that through the.
This this idea actually came from the community.
This did come up.
So we've heard about this periodically from members of the public when we've asked members of the public to brainstorm for us on ideas that they might want to see. Now, of course, that's not binding, and hearing it from a couple of people doesn't mean that the whole community would be behind it. But it seemed like an interesting idea, that space could be used differently. And as long as we were thinking about the Holiday House, it seemed like an opportune time to put it in front of you. So this is your decision about whether you would want us to move forward with talking to the community, getting a consultant engaged to see what the community might want. And if you have no interest in that, then we just take it off. If you do, then we pursue it with the consultant, see what feedback we get, and then we go from there. And if the community feedback is, we don't want it, then.
Can you tell me when? I've never heard this mentioned in any of the forums or seen it any of our initiative lists as a community comment?
It has come back in priority initiative comments. I believe that, I apologize, but the only name that's coming to mind is one of the people who supported this idea was Dennis Neer. But we have heard this from a couple of members of the community over time. I just don't have that list today.
Okay, I'm unaware of that, but. So the initial grant would be to do that community initial, I'm sorry, cost, if you will, would be a large part of that would be to organize the community outreach for this. Thank you. Those are my questions. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, we are asking questions at this point. Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. And that Prop sixty-eight money, that hundred eighty-six thousand, that is something that we are also fluid on. We could say yes, we want it, and then later we could say we've changed our mind, or are we committed once we say yes?
According to my truly excellent management analyst, he says, quote, "Grantee may unilaterally rescind the contract at any time prior to the commencement of the project."
So. Well, there's a quote.
You can get out at any time before you start spending a dollar of their money.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that answer takes care of our questions, comments. Let's go back to Councilwoman Shepherd Romy. Do you have any comments?
So would the first twenty thousand be out of that one hundred eighty-six? Or does the one hundred eighty-six thousand per capita Prop sixty-eight have required to be construction?
We typically for, we're required to provide a local match, and it's our practice to reserve as much of the other public monies for construction and use as our local match the design activities, and then just a small amount toward construction. So that's why the twenty thousand that's shown there would be twenty thousand from the city's capital reserves.
All right, thanks. I'm sorry. So that was one more question. I apologize.
No, no problem. And any comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, I don't believe that this needs to be done, the landscape design work. I think it is a perfectly acceptable the way it is, although it does need help for that location. Obviously, I think it's on us to improve the structure there itself and bring it to code. However, I don't envision any landscape changes to the area. I think that it's nice where as it is, so I would not support going through the design, nor have I heard any interest by the community, except people who don't want a large construction project and a change in that area. So I haven't heard anybody, and I'm surprised that there's been comments. I've never seen it either in reading. So I cannot support this as it's presently structured. I would like to use the funds to only renovate the existing structure to meet current standards.
Thank you.
No design changes on that location.
Councilmember Udi, comment?
No.
Okay, Vice Mayor Tom?
I I join Councilmember Shepherd Romy on on the scope of what what is intended here. I I do agree that with consultation of the various departments, including the the public safety departments, that we do take a look at at what can be done with the with the building itself. But beyond that, I I don't think we need two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of work done there, even if it is, which is a matching of of forty thousand. So what I would suggest that we do is that we come back with something revised and to to establish how much money really should be spent here.
Okay, thank you. I am in support of pursuing this. I think that we can certainly keep the integrity of the corner, and if we're going to go forward on perhaps renovating the Holiday House, something that just spiffed up a little bit could look very nice, and I think we could get some great ideas out of it. So with that, those who are in favor of keeping it as.
Is it possible to make one other comment?
Yes.
At this time, I I will say, the other part that concerns me is if we develop or trying to develop that as anything more than what we have there now, we may be going into the area of environmental review, because if we provide more access, more seating, et cetera, that is a corner that is subject to very high pollution levels. We already have the rotary clock area, which does have seating, my understanding is, or people can wait there should they need to cross or want to. And we have a lot of exposure along Huntington Drive, and I am aware that there are P-three and P-ten particulates, this type of thing, particularly from traffic. And that corner has a significant amount of people going by as well as idling there, you know, as Sierra Madre. That's a real problematic corner that we're going to look at for making the traffic safety in that location. And so that's another reason why I don't want this project to move ahead until we have a greater understanding. And any building that we do there, we may be looking at a sequel review given any construction, excuse me, unless it's purely a renovation because of the exposure. And the AQMD, my understanding, is very strict in its analysis in this regard.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that comment, I just wanted to ask one more question then of Director Throne. Would that corner with the money that could come from Prop sixty-eight, is it a variety of options that we could use, including more heavily landscaping that area?
Yes, it's intended for parks.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, any other comments before we do a straw vote? If not, all of those in favor of going forward? All of those opposed? You have your.
Conditionally opposed.
I'm sorry?
I'm conditionally opposed. I'd like to see this with a better understanding and read it, redone in accordance with the desires expressed here.
Well, isn't that, can I just, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Tom?
Thank you.
Of course. Page eighty-nine, would that be a better area? That's that Holiday House Restoration, but I don't know if that's a limited.
That would be a separate project.
That is, that is just for the facade that they put up.
Okay, thank you.
I'm agreeing. I agree to that.
Right, right. I did know if we could also.
They would be different items. What I'm hearing is that there might be some interest in a reconstructed version of this. I will conditionally say that we'll try to get that to you this year with Michael leaving and an interim director. It might be that that just becomes an item that waits until next year so that it could be fleshed out properly based on whatever it is that you guys are looking for. So let's see if we can get that done for this budget cycle. If not, it might wait for the new director, and then we can come forward with another proposal.
Are we correct in presuming the Prop sixty-eight money is open-ended and when it can be used?
I would say, yes, they're they're working extraordinarily slow. So that probably bodes well for us.
Great, thank you. So we have the direction on that item?
Yes, thank you. Can I ask that if we can have somebody on staff, I know that Director Throne is leaving, but perhaps somebody else in his department or in the city hall look into whether there are deadlines associated with these fees, and if we do have to comply or come forward with a different project to utilize those. They are money, they're, my understanding, that are residents paid elsewhere and are now getting some of it back to improve our park. And I'm sure there are parkways, our parks, which are the medians, et cetera. So I'm sure that there would be other projects that we could come forward. I'm hoping on this, even putting Lacy Park aside. So I just don't want to run into a deadline. If you can look at that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Next item, page eighty-one, Lacy Park Compost Station. This is looking at SB thirteen eighty-three grant funds. Any questions on this item, Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Councilwoman Shepherd Romy?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
I have no questions.
I have none either. Any comments from anyone?
Yes, I I still object to the use of of funds and any public funds inside, any non-San Marino public funds inside the the. Any non-Sanrio public funds inside the the uh. The gates of San Marino, um, but I inside the gates of Lacy Park, just because it exposes us to to. Substantially potentially other problems.
Thank you.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, uh, yes, um, i- in the past, we were able to avoid certain regulatory requirements. Ordances and so forth that detail what happens within Lacy Park. Uh, and argue that we're allowed to charge five dollars to non-residents because we are just using residential funds to maintain it. And um, a- and by, in my opinion, uh, by potentially expending grant funds. Or by expending frank grant funds, we um, we expose ourselves to the argument that that that. We are just using, we're not just using C M R O uh funds. So I I'm not opposed to the project. It's a great idea. Twenty thousand dollars is twenty thousand dollars. Uh, that we could spend out of our own budget rather than going for other people's money that exposes us to potential problems.
Could we ask our attorney to weigh in on this, please?
Uh, yes, different funding sources have different requirements in terms of of um. The flexibility you have uh with things like charging resident, non-resident fees. Um, some. Uh, grant funds would necessitate uh that you eliminate that. And some grant funds would uh enable you to continue them. I'm not familiar with the requirements of this particular funding source. So I can't comment specifically as to whether the use of these would trigger that issue.
And it it's it's bigger than just that, although the legal problem, it is the public relations problem. Uh, Los Angeles Times went after us years ago and our argument was simply that we're not using any public uh sources other than our. And I just, I don't want to put Samara through that again.
So then is it your proposal that we not take the grant funds, but we spend twenty thousand of our own?
That would be, that would be my proposal.
We have another option, but first I'd like the mayor, I'm sorry, City Manager.
Don't do that. No, no, that is yours. Uh, for what it's worth, when we were considering this project. To uh try to stay away from the very problem that Vice Mayor Talt is arguing uh for, um, or against, sorry. With this project would be located outside of the pay gates of the park, uh, which i- inside the park, there's a potential vulnerability. The idea of situating it outside of the park is that there's no non-resident fiat issue to use the composting area. So it wouldn't trip that requirement, even if it's some later date, somebody wanted to come after us for that. It doesn't change the optics issue. That Vice Mayor Talt is raising, but this project is not inside the pay gates. It's outside the pay.
Thank you.
And it's in our, i- it's in the, the uh.
I think it's.
The gates to the rec- rec department or to the, to the park department back there.
No, it would actually be when there's the um, there's the front parking lot off of Virginia when you come in. Uh, from Virginia and you make the left turn and there's a parking lot there at the um. Uh, southernmost end, that's where we would put it. That area is always open. It's, it's really, it's only locked when the park is locked at night, but it's not, it's, it's accessible to the public on weekends. Without having to pay a fee.
Steve, I would argue that it's in Lacy Park, just not in the paid part of Lacy Park.
You could argue what you want. It's the optics.
I I'm supporting what you're saying, but.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's still.
Can I bring up another option? Um, since this funding is based on a per capita and it's available all through the state. Um, would there be an interest in looking at another location within the city to have this located? If not.
I I think I. For my two cents, um, I appreciate we're in a sensitive position regarding Lacy Park. And we have turned down, there was the history that um Vice Mayor Talt mentioned as well. We have turned away monies um, but in in the past, um, from the county, I believe. To do some work there as well, even since I've been on the council or we've been on the council mayor. Um, and so my concern is, again, we are in a better position to only. Use money at Lacy Park that are city monies. And I would say twenty thousand dollars to do this in the current location. Which actually makes the most sense in terms of staff time, the the most of the compost and organic waste. Is gonna be from the park and generated by our Parks and Public Works Department, which is there. And I know um. Leaving the. Gate open and putting it in its current location or or having it not, except for the nightly um, safety issues. Uh, protections that we do by closing gates. I think that is a great way and it should be open to everyone who wants to use it, no ID required. Um, and it is a service we're providing for residents and the general public. I hope that neighboring communities do come and avail themselves of this compost. I, and we should use our money, our city funds, it is a minor cost in order to achieve this. And I think it would be beneficial for um our residents as well as our neighboring communities. So actually, we'd come out looking better and doing better.
So in answer to my question, you're saying no?
Yeah, I, as far as relocating it, I think that the.
That's what I'm asking, okay. Um, the other thing then that I'd like to float, since this is granted. Um, a small amount, it is still being given to us. And I think just about every community around is accepting it, has a broad um possibility of uses. Even down to tablets and uh future education um, uh, programs with um SB thirteen eighty-three. So if we were to not go forward with this, I would strongly advocate that we find a simple other use for the money. So um, any other comments that people want to make? If not, we'll move to a vote.
So Mayor, what I'm hearing for your, for your voting options, it sounds like what I'm hearing is keep the project as it is. Or keep the project, but pay for it out of city funds. I'm seeing heads that.
Or or just remove it altogether.
Right, or um, because it still ties in state money, I'd like to add. An- another option, and that would be using, because this is in reference to um thirteen eighty-three.
Yes, I heard that if you decide to fund this out of the city's budget, that then you're asking us to try to figure out if there's something else that we can.
Okay, so um, let's move forward then with the options. Um, how many people would like to go forward with it as is? How many people uh seeing none, how many would like to go forward in doing this with city money? Not using the state money?
Okay, so we will make that change and then we'll see if we can put another program together using the state money. Yes, that would be the hope. Thank you.
Can I ask you what the amount is um that we have available under Senate, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three?
Twenty thousand dollars.
This is a total, yes, sum total of the uh distribution allocation.
Yes.
I didn't see that in here, so thank you.
Okay, um, moving forward to page eighty-two. Uh, Lacy Park. Parking improvements. Um, this is a twenty-five thousand dollar um. Uh, consultant to suggest possible off-street parking. Um, at this point. Um, do you have any questions, Councilmember Udi?
Uh, I don't understand the logic behind this one. It it seems like uh, we're, we're landlocked. It is what it is. So I don't, I'm just wondering why I spent twenty-five thousand dollars to have somebody tell us.
I think a citizen has pushed strongly for this, so please, Director, give us what.
Uh, we did receive community input during the engagement process that there's just too many cars on the residential streets on the weekends. And can we do something about it, like build more parking lots? So in response to that, uh, you uh. Can consider hiring a consultant to figure out where we can squeeze more parking inside the uh, inside of Lacy Park. This is separate from parking lot improvements, which are existing parking lots that that we uh need to uh bring up to date. This would be a new parking lot and a study to ascertain uh what the size of it would be based on uh weekend. Uh, traffic needs and then properly suiting, uh, citing it and developing a cost.
Thank you.
Questions, Councilwoman Shepard Romi?
Um, yes, it, so if I understand this, this would be taking space. Away from the park to make more parking lot. Is that correct?
Potentially.
Yes, that's probably a very good uh assessment of it, yes.
And I wanted to, I I believe we discussed this before and this might have come from a community member. Um, consider a shuttle service on the weekend and renting space perhaps and Valentine Elementary School or another lot. Um, that's existing instead of giving up our park um lands to become paved over. So has that been explored or addressed, or would that be part of the considerations?
Um, I think you could uh very easily modify the scope of this um item to explore those off-street. Um, opportunities and come back with options to the council as to, you you could reduce uh park landscaping by this much. Or you could enter into cooperative agreement and have some sort of shuttle. That's certainly within the the purview of the scope of work of of this kind of project.
But it would have to be refashioned because this is meant to just, sorry, I'm looking at the language here. This is about construction. Costs, right?
Uh, I think the, the way that it's so carefully written. The hiring of an engineering consultant to determine suitable locations for additional off-street parking is recommended. So off-street parking could be off-street at another location, including a, including a bus. And if uh the council is interested in going forward with that, we would make sure we would write that into the proposal that that's would be something they were focused.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
Questions, uh, Vice Mayor Tom?
I I have no questions.
Uh, and I have no questions. Um, discussion, Councilmember Udi?
Seems like a waste of money to me.
There's an honest answer. Councilwoman Shepard Romi, any um discussion?
Discussion is I I don't want to give up Lacy Park space, nor do I want to build a parking structure there. I think that would probably really anger more residents than what our current situation is. So I don't see that anything at Lacy Park proper needs to be done. And I don't know if this is um an expense we want to incur at this, at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tom?
Uh, I've heard from a lot of uh, right, I've heard from residents on. Uh, the, the local streets, particularly those that go. Uh, east from Virginia and uh I think we owe it to them to see if we could, we we could determine some resolution. And and as I see it, this money is going to, to determine that resolution. So I'm available.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I am not seeing the need at this particular time uh with that straw vote. Um, those who would be in favor of going forward with setting the money aside for the study. The location to be and to be determined if there is to be one, um, but using this money to use the consultation.
Well, I would if it would be a no-build option. I don't want to.
I think what Director Throne said that, you know, to explore all options.
Yeah, but I don't want to explore all options. I don't want to add more parking at that location.
I think we're hearing that. We just need to know if you're willing to have it in the budget for us to retain a consultant. We can, we can. We can adjust what we ask the consultant to do later, but if the money isn't set aside, then there's no consultant at all. So, I mean, we could certainly give them that direction.
Right, I don't know if my other um, uh, Vice Mayor Talt, the other person in support of doing something about the parking at this time. I understand if he is in the same mindset as I am, so I want to give clear cons. Um, direction to a consultant, should we hire one, that this is an off-site parking. Focus project, bringing, having people park elsewhere and get to Lacy Park, how we can make that happen.
Uh, m- my comment on that is, is I want the consultant to develop a toolbox, which would include. Any potential resolution. And then we have to make the decision as to among which resolution we accept. Uh, which may very well include what you suggested earlier, but there's going to have to be a balance made as there is in a lot of matters. So I I would like to see what our options are and the only way to do that is to approve the consultant.
Thank you.
That's not the only way, but it's the most efficient way.
Okay, uh, let's have a straw vote. Those in favor of approving this item for a twenty-five thousand dollar expense. One, those opposed. Okay. Uh, moving along, uh, Lacy Park Admissions Booth. Um, this is a twenty-five thousand dollar expense, five thousand for engineering, twenty thousand construction. And um, let's ask questions first, uh, Councilmember Udi.
Twenty thousand seems huge. I I built a playhouse for twelve hundred.
We might hire you.
Exactly. But if five thousand is the engineering, twenty is the construction, that just seems. That, that, that's a garage.
The response to uh the council members' sage observation is my colleague Finance Director, who says we have to pay prevailing.
We have.
We have to pay prevailing wage on uh on construction. So uh, thi- this is a budget level. I mean, certainly we would.
What, what do you think it would really come in?
Twenty-five thousand, twenty thousand. The cost of lumber, you know?
Uh, you know, at the end of the day, when, when, when you have to uh actually provide utilities to it and heating and cooling. You're, you're probably, you know, bouncing up against your twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any questions, uh, Councilwoman Shepard Romi?
Yes, I think elsewhere in here, um, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what page, but there is. And it's going to be an analysis, okay, on page ninety-one, Parks and Public Works Facilities renovation. And in my mind, the, and I'm sure you're the um, men and women who work for the city. And uh, have their workspace at the park, at Lacy Park. And what is the current um Parks and Public Works Facility need, uh, would like this to be um. Move forward expeditiously because it's quite outdated, some of those structures, particularly where our um staff works. And my thought is the admissions booth would best be wrapped up into the same, both for consistency of design. And we're designing a system, it would presumably operate on the same electrical, on the same whatever. It should be part and parcel. If that means this number has to go up, then I'm fine with that, but they should be considered as part of one in the same. Um, if you will, project. I know that we want to do the admissions booth. But I think it should be done along with this in terms of some cost savings that may ultimately, because you're right, it has to be, they all have to be. At a much higher level um of uh facilities and utilities and things like that. And all of that has to be brought up to be acceptable. So that will be part of this project, I would think.
Do you have any other questions?
Is that possible?
It is possible. We did separate out the admissions booth because we do have um a health and safety issue. With the um park attendant there on the weekends, especially in the summers. Um, it's, it's a very small little box that our park attendants are in. Um, and we really wanted to get them relief on that. That's where we would build the minimum amount of thing and being creative. Uh, be able to repurpose that building elsewhere in the park and not deviate too far away from the aesthetics that's going on. The over, the other item uh that you mentioned, the bigger picture, is a much longer process. Um, it will involve community engagement because any touching of those buildings.
Right.
Um, I think the community will want to be involved with. Um, there's historic components of it that we will have to deal with. So getting to construction on any of that is. Way off several summers from now.
Okay.
This is something that we can uh jump, jump on right away this year, get done, knock it out. And then uh, you know, if we're, if we're uh thinking ahead enough, be able to repurpose that building into something else in the future.
Alright, then I appreciate that. You, I understand the need is is most urgent at the admissions booth and um. We should move this forward separately to, because it's achievable in the short term. So thank you for that.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Tom?
I have no questions.
I have one, and this was actually brought to me by a resident. Would it be possible, and of course, we we don't really have an idea on the the true dimensions of what this new booth would look like. It sounds like out of necessity, it would need to be larger. Would it be possible in doing so on the side of it to perhaps have a wayfinding map? For the park? And if so, could we squeeze that into the cost, or would you see the need? For perhaps an increased budget?
Oh, I think we can certainly include a wayfinding map. That's really a minor expense compared to the the other things that we will have to do. To have an appropriate building for the the employee.
So it could be large, human scale, right? Great. Okay, thank you. So then, moving back, we've asked our questions. Discussion, Councilmember Udi?
No, no other comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any discussion?
No, I'm in favor of this.
Vice Mayor Tal, any discussion?
I have no further comment.
And neither do I. Those in favor of going forward with this? Those opposed. We're for. Okay, thank you. We're going to give that person some relief.
Mayor, just before you go to the next one, just having watched the voting, I just want to say that since there are four of you today, not five, if an item deadlocked. That would mean that it would remain because there would not be a vote to remove. And then once it comes back to you for final adoption, we would have a vote of five and the final decision would be made. And if there are any that fall into that circumstance. We will call them out during that budget adoption process so that you know that you can get there. I just. We've been in danger of that a couple of times. It hasn't happened yet, but I just wanted to have a chance to say that before we got into that circumstance, if that's how we would handle it.
I I'm gonna hold up on there. It we're not making any legal boy. We're just making.
Agreed. I just mean in terms of what would stay in the budget that you see when you see this again.
Okay, because. Okay, I mean, it's it the whole language about leaving it in like you have some right to leave it in. It's not the case. And I I I get what you're getting at now. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, page 84. Lacy Park Playground Management Program. You can see that this is $150,000. I think it was originally spread over three years. It has now been moved into one year. Are there? Questions from Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Questions from Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
I have, is there going to be? Sorry. I think that this needs to be done, and I'm wondering if there will be an effort. I see that there's a note. That donations may be available to offset some of the expenses, and I do think. So I'm hoping that whatever the initial cost would be, some of it will be public outreach, both to comment. And to facilitate some donation support for this. There's a lot of people who. Would benefit and are very supportive of even past times in that playground, and I think it would help if this has a very rigorous community involvement. Both for the city and its ultimate design. And I'm hoping that that is part of the 150, is it the public outreach at the start, and it's not that already designed and. Ready to be bought or something. So is it? Is that possible?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. That is my question. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tal?
I have no comments, although do I I know questions, although when you consider donations possibly, you're talking about the serial. Car classic, auto classic, motor classic. Have you talked to them at all about this? Okay.
Not yet.
Anything further?
No.
Okay. And I have no question. Discussion, Councilmember Udi?
No, makes sense.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
No, I'm I'm in support both for the. With the caveat that we generate a good deal of public outreach for design ideas. I think you'll get a lot of input as well as. As I said before, the opportunity for donations from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tal?
I'm I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to commend the Public Safety Commission, particularly. Chair Bozell, who was the one who said, wait a minute, I have a kid who goes over and we see how much of this is broken. Could we please move it into one year? And I think it's just a wise decision considering the incredible use and. I think that community input will be really important because this is very, very heavily used. Moving on to the straw vote, all those in favor? Okay, we're for. Thank you. Moving forward. Next item item is the evidence awning cover. This is a $9,500 expense and it's for a metal awning. Are there any questions from Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney? Page 85.
Yes, I'm looking at it. I am unsure whether this is an additional. Awning or is this to replace the awning structure that we have there? I just. I know it says storage area, but I don't know what storage and parking, it's all under. I have not been back there for a couple of years because of COVID, so I'm not sure how this area has grown or what what we're referring to. Is this an additional area or is this the existing what I envision as covered by an awning?
This is an additional area next to where the awning that the patrol cars are underneath.
Okay, so this is no wanting, no nothing in this area now to cover the storage evidence.
It's exposed to.
Okay, thank you. That helps me understand where it is. That's my only question.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No question.
Vice Mayor Tal?
No questions.
I have no questions. Vote, straw vote in favor. For, thank you.
So again, as a reminder, you'll skip page 86. We apologize for that, and you can move directly to page 87.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so this is a citywide heating, ventilation, air conditioning upgrades. This is $500,000 of ARP money. Do you have any questions, Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Tal?
No questions.
I have none. Straw vote, all those in favor? Unanimous, moving along. Next item is the old mill pedestrian lighting improvements. This is a $25,000 expense, page 88. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
My understanding is that there was a lighting plan. That was previously put forth by the Old Mill, the committee, or or I I don't know. In conjunction with their own work and their analysis of the project. So my only question has to do with the. Is that what we are going to be basing this on? Are we going to separately assess? Their lighting needs beyond what they previously asked?
This is sort of a two-part project, part of part city and part Old Mill Foundation. The pedestrian lighting as you enter Old Mill. Molino from the street, when you enter from Old Mill Road, there's pedestrian lighting up in the trees. That's the city's responsibility to maintain. So we're going to. Restore that, make sure it's it's electrically good, I guess, for want of a better term. And then be able to provide power to a certain point inside the Old Mill grounds, after which point. The Old Mill Foundation will take over the rest of the work to to basically go to a low, low voltage. And LED lighting. Now, they won't be, they won't. Need to change their electrical service in any way that all the underground stuff is good, just they won't need those huge floodlights anymore to do things. So they're going to go to much softer, less power consuming. But our portion is the pedestrian access in. This was something that has been presented to council over the last, I think, three years, and this is probably, this is the right time to do it.
All right, and as far as it will still be, there will still be, I'm going to say minimal. It won't be bright lights that we're adding in the trees or changing the effect, just greater lighting. Is that right?
It it it'll be more appropriate for for pedestrians. There's some very dark patches there. And there there's ideas from the Old Mill Foundation as to how we can up. Improve our portion. So we're going to use them as the resource. We wanted to separate these these two items of work because we have to pay prevailing wage and go through the whole public procurement process. And they can run free compared to us. And so they will be our guides in this, but we will do the work that's. That's in the that's in the city's pedestrian responsibility.
All right, thank you. That helps me understand.
Anything further?
No.
Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Tal?
No questions.
I have none. Moving to our straw vote, those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, for. Moving on to page 89, the Holiday House Restoration. We touched on this a bit earlier. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
I guess I I would need to understand more what this encompasses. What is the end result of the? Proposal?
The end result of the proposal is that the white building that shows up during the holiday seasons. It's currently being held together very tentatively with a lot of. Old fasteners into old wood. It needs to be painted. It really needs to be restored back to its original glory. It currently resides in Lacy Park during the year. And so we have been working with the Rotary Club and the Chamber. As to how to cooperatively restore this. We we have more resources to get it restored than they do. And so we would be proposing a joint project of restoration of this. And really taking over its it's setting it up, it's taking it down and storing it, and they would be providing a certain amount of don. Of financial donation toward toward this project to restore it. So we so that it can last, you know, another 30 or 40 years.
And would this involve more storage? The question that I have apart is, as well as make, it says in here, and I'm quoting, as well as make provisions for its safe storage during the year. So would that be a change from how it's presently stored and involve purchasing something or putting it somewhere else? I'm just trying to understand the whole total, both renovating and and so what do we do with it after?
Currently, it's. It's stored as if you were putting it in your old shed in in your backyard. It's it's kind of there and the spiders are there and it. It's it's kept out of the weather, but it's really not stored in a fashion that every year you can take it in and out. So for instance, as an example. Event venues have. Frameworks that you put chairs on, and then you know that the chairs are always on on this frame. We we would be looking at building something. Inside one of our storage facilities that is totally appropriate rather than just stacking it all in the back. Putting our equipment in the front, and then when it's time, trying to to squeeze it out among everything else. If we're going to spend the time and effort to restore, we need to make sure that we. To restore it, we need to have the the right place and the right methods of storing it over the year. You know, for the nine months or the the 10 months when it's not used.
Thank you. That helps.
Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Tal, any questions?
I'm in support of the Christmas.
Okay, any discussion? That before we take our straw vote, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any discussion?
I know I'm in support of this as well, and I hope that. It will end in a better, and I wanted to. Suggest that you look at the garage behind Turner House as a possible location because it's a very underutilized. Granted, it's old, but it's not nearly anything like the existing location where it's kind of pushed into. If you will, and leaned against the wall. And I believe that just the Turner House garage has miscellaneous. Items from the rec department, summer program, but those could be kept or condensed, and it's really an underutilized. And this might be a great place and very near the street that could be accessed at the convenience of people who want to put it up and take it down.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi, any discussion?
No, makes sense.
Vice Mayor Tal?
No further discussion.
Having been involved in the takedown of this, this past holiday season. Is in the top three of the most deplorable places in the city. I'm sorry, Director Throne, PPW is right up there. And I'd like to thank Mr. Horgan and Mr. Neer for really being emphatic in their support. Of the joint effort going forward with this, and I'd like to thank those people who really pushed for that this year. With that, the straw vote, all those in favor? For, thank you. Barth Community Room Lighting for 60,000. That includes 10,000 for engineering. Let's start with any questions. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, this again seems like a huge number. And how much are we spending on the AV upgrade? And it. Because this is, are we going to demo the whole room and start over again?
Well, when you compare those two items of work, AV and lighting, AV is significantly simpler. Because with recent changes in technology, it's all wireless, so you really don't have to get behind the walls to to do anything. Lighting for rooms is it's an art and a science, especially when now you want to add to it. You may have, you may want to have task lighting because of the activities that go inside this room because it's multipurpose. And then we're going to add the additional flavor of being a broadcast area for council meetings. So that type of lighting is way different than general illumination, which is different than task lighting. So it does become expensive. It can become very expensive. But in my experience, having lit two council chambers for studio lighting, this this is on the low end of. Of those expenditures. Typically. One would think that because we live in Los Angeles, that there's studio lighting experts all over because there's studios all over. There are, they don't like this work because it's too small and too fussy. So that does add a little bit to the premium of of the cost estimate. And typically, those who design it also do the installation and provide the materials. So it's 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 a package.
Sure, helpful. Thank you. If we go to studio lighting, is there opportunities then to rent that bathroom out? For people to do productions?
Absolutely. Studio lighting really makes the the room much more usable for streaming because now you're able to actually.
Maybe like to schools use it for broadcast journalism?
Well, certainly, when you get the the AV portion of it done, then you've got the complete.
Yeah, okay, helpful. Thank you.
Okay, questions? I'm sorry, have I asked you, Councilman?
I didn't have any questions. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any questions?
I have no questions.
I have no questions either. Straw poll, all those in favor?
Are we commenting? I only I only do want to encourage along the same lines that. Councilmember Udi got to, this should be a community benefit. So I hope when we speak with the lighting. Consultant contractor, that we explore some of those other needs that are broader. It's not really a city council meeting place. It's really a community meeting place. And whether it's community groups that pay the minimum fee or actually, you know, a production. Or our schoolchildren, I think we need to look at the larger scope and present that when we have the consultant here. Just because the multiuses, it should be a resource for everybody as well as our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologies. Any other discussion? Councilmember, Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Okay, vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, for. Next item, the last item for this section, number page 91, Park and Public Works Facilities renovation. You have information there about $50,000, both at Lacy Park and City Hall. Questions, Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Questions, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
I was confused. I was confused between the title and the description. Are we looking at City Hall as well? Or is this just a Parks and Public Works expense?
It's both. It's Lacy Park and the facilities at City Hall.
And I thought the City Hall was done not that long ago.
It's just the public works part of City Hall. It's not City Hall proper. There's a portion of public works, you know, that's on the.
Oh, I understand. It's on the side along San Marino Avenue, that portion, not the original historic building. All right. Thank you. That helps. The clarification, I appreciate it.
Okay, questions, Councilmember Udi?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Um, I have one. Because as I just mentioned on the last item, the facility at Lacy Park looks so bad. If we were to give that at the same time, and I understand it's historic significance, but is it possible or would it be not advisable to do an exterior spruce up on that? If it could be something as minimal as painting, it just does not look like an attractive place to work at all? Sorry.
Yes, that would totally be within the, the scope of work of this. Those buildings are historic, and so we would touch very lightly on them. But part of it would be, you know, fresh color of paint, replacing places in, in the brickwork where it needs to be repointed. Any, any changes, any replacement of broken or missing tiles. I mean, that, that's certainly, when it comes to touching the windows and the doors, I would probably defer to my community development department as to what we can do there. And that would be part of the renovation of it. There would, there would be no significant at all changes to, to the outside. Those buildings are beautiful like they are, but they need to, they need to be a little rejuvenated.
If there were interest in it, what would you see the additional cost being on this item?
That would be more of a construction cost than a design cost. Designing an, an exterior is, is really kind of what you would wind up doing anyway as part of your interior renovations. You would still have to be designing work on the exterior. Once, once this project moves along, we have a, a preliminary cost estimate. That, that's when you can, you'll be able to see what the exterior costs would be.
Okay, thank you. Going back to discussion, Councilwoman Shepard Romey, any discussion on this?
Yes, I, I think what you just brought up raised a concern. This is, portions of the Lacy Park facility are historic in nature. And so I'm wondering, I think at this time, we should include, and as we ultimately had to do for this structure, some sort of historic preservation consultant in the design. And I don't know if that would change the cost, or if it does, I would like to see that come back to us. I don't want to not support this. It is needed. But I do want us to be careful if we start any exterior modifications. Then we definitely have to have a preservation consultant on hand to advise us. And it might be better to do that at the design phase, meaning this phase, than it is down the line when we get too far gone and we've committed to a certain design that is not appropriate in certain aspects.
Yes, we, we can certainly add that to the scope of work, yes.
So whether they'd subcontract, whoever ultimately would subcontract with a historical preservation consultant?
We, we.
Could be within this.
What we would do is this is, this is your budget level. And so when we go out for a request for proposals, when we get the proposals back, they could fit inside the fifty thousand dollar box, which is usually, I tell the consultants, here's the size of the box, stay inside it. And they're usually very good about, if we would make that an optional task, then that would be something that would be out of their cost proposal, and it would, it would then be, yes, here's their reservation or a restoration design cost. Oh, and historic preservation would be this much more. We include it with the proposal and tell them we have this much money. And they generally work with us on that.
So you would include that component in this, that was not in this description?
Inside the description, we can, we'll modify the description to include that.
Thank you.
So that we've got a, a note to ourselves.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that, that modification. Then I can support this.
Okay, Councilmember Udi?
I'm fine with it.
Vice Mayor Taub?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so then, would I be, I support this? Would, would we be correct in asking if we want a vote for a somewhat expanded assessment? Or it as it is here?
I think you provided enough direction on just adding the historic preservation consultant.
And the exterior. Okay, great. Thank you. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Four, thank you.
At this point, I think we have been doing some good. Close to being done. The only thing remaining for this item is to determine if there's anything from years two through five that you want to move up. That has, let's see, how many items? Well, we wouldn't go through those one at a time necessarily, unless you wanted to. It's pages ninety-five through one hundred. And if there's anybody who wanted to bring any of these up, then that could be a discussion. If not, you would be complete with this item.
Okay, then, in that case, I will ask that everybody take a few minutes to look through those items. And is there anything that you see that you'd like to move forward?
My only concern is, or comment on this is that the stone man is here and it's zero and it's still left. And I was hoping, am hoping that that is something that comes before us in the short term, in the next year, to consider what will be done with that location and have that as an agenda item. I don't necessarily need that to be a budget, but we need to start getting an idea of what we envision or the options for that space, as well as an outreach to the community surrounding that to get some input. I think we had a little bit before, but then that was years ago and pre-COVID. And I do think that we need to start that discussion.
Agreed. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
I have nothing to bring forward.
Vice Mayor?
I have nothing to bring forward.
Okay, I think then we are at the point where we have finished these items. Maybe take a ten-minute recess.
Can we make it five? I, I've got a court conference at eleven. And so I'd like to at least get through the first two items before we do that. Four and five. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marlowe. Thank you, Mayor Gackowski, Vice Mayor Taub, and Councilmembers for your time to allow me to present. The item before you is for a security system to go around the PD and the City Hall campus. The security system would include surveillance cameras, intercom systems, and a security gate between the EOC and the fire department. Currently, we do not have a security system to protect the City Hall campus. The cameras and intercoms were removed roughly about eighteen months ago during the remodel, and they were not replaced due to wiring technology and outdated equipment. The safety in the city equipment, the safety of the city equipment and the city personnel are paramount. Dispatches are the primary persons who monitor the cameras, the intercom system, and allow vendors for all city departments entrance to the back gate. Without the camera systems, the dispatchers cannot see or have any verbal communication with who's at the back gate to allow the mentions. Also, the dispatchers are alone at times at nighttime and during the day, and they have no visible surveillance system to show who's in the lobby or who's walking around the campus. The interview room located inside the police department is also not being recorded right now. So any critical incidences for detectives or patrol to do interviews are not being recorded at this time. So besides the camera, we'll provide a general liability against litigation of property damage and, and falls in city property and so forth. The intercoms are required for the communication between, as I stated, dispatchers with the front lobby and the back gate. The side gate between the EOC and the fire department is instrumental in safeguarding the equipment of the city. Without that side gate, it allows unauthorized access from City Hall into the police parking lot, which has our police vehicles, fire department vehicles. It also allows them access to the evidence room, the range room, the fire department facility, and all city employees' vehicles. Quick side story, I kind of briefly went over with Dr. Marlowe yesterday. Several years ago, my younger brother's ex-girlfriend actually went onto the city property in that back lot and put her property, or my younger brother's property in the bed of my personal vehicle. It's funny now, but at the time it was not because that could have been somebody dangerous. All of our police vehicles, all of our city vehicles, and our personal vehicles are exposed back there. Another reason for that side gate is our police personnel need to have a sense of security, knowing when they're doing their patrol checks for their city vehicles, that nobody's going to walk up behind them. Every officer has had an encounter with somebody walking from the City Hall back to our back lot and encountered a stranger going to Public Works or trying to find escape route, or not an escape route, and exit to their vehicle off Roanoke or San Marino Avenue. These topics have been a real concern for many of our dispatchers and our officers and brought to our attention several times over the last years. And over the last eighteen months, it's grown because we have not had a security system in place anymore. So as Dr. Marlowe said, we cannot hold this off to a further date.
Okay, thank you and welcome, Commander Tebbets. I'm going to ask city council members at this point if they have any questions of you. Councilmember Udi?
I have no questions. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, Councilwoman Shepard Romey, any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Commander, for your work on this area. I appreciate the multiple bids and the time it took of your, you and your staff to get, bring this forward in this form. And I know it's outside of normal, so you had to go out and, and do the extra leg work in a rushed fashion or whatever, immediate fashion, but it's well done, and this is very thorough. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Vice Mayor Taub?
I have no questions. Thank you.
I have no questions either. Is there anyone present? I see no one present wishing to speak on this subject. Do we have anyone electronically?
Just giving a moment for any of these.
Sure.
I do not have any requests for comment on this item.
Okay, and I will bring this back for discussion. Councilmember Udi, any discussion on the matter?
I can make sense. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Romey, any discussion?
No, I think it's thorough and well done, and I would support it.
And Vice Mayor?
I, I do support. I've been against that safety fence for a while, but your personal story helps convince me that it's necessary. Thank you.
And I also support it. And as you can see, we didn't even need to call upon Chief. So do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase and installation of a camera surveillance and intercom system from AAA Network Solutions or AAA, I don't know what they call themselves. Solicit bids for a security gate, authorize city manager to execute.
for a security gate, authorize city manager to execute contracts for both, and appropriate $75,023 to account 394-30-4600-0887 PD Surveillance System, parenthetical, from the capital reserve funds for this work.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tol?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, moving on to item number three, approval for an increase in the 2122 Aquatics Program expenditure.
Changing of the guard.
We will let people do their musical chairs. Thank you. Director Johnson is now here, so would you please give us your report?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Tolton, and Councilmembers. As stated in the staff report, this item seeks a budget appropriation to reinstate the aquatics program section budget back into the Recreation Division operating budget as a program that will be managed in-house by city staff versus a contracted third-party service provider. This budget appropriation also increases the Community Services Division's full-time equivalent total and requires an update to the city's part-time salary schedule. Next slide, please. And I believe you guys have a copy of the presentation in front of you.
Thank you.
As you will recall, this fiscal year budget plan to support San Marino's summer aquatics program included a two-year, or year two, excuse me, of an agreement with an aquatics management service provider. And that was for a four-day-per-week program only. On February 28th, the city terminated this professional services agreement with that provider. Council directed staff to immediately bring the management back in-house under the responsibility of the REC Division for the 2022 summer season, which runs from June through July. This decision requires a supporting budget appropriation for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. It should be noted that this slide is informational only. It has no bearing on the budget appropriation that is in front of you today. This table provides only a year-over-year comparison of the cost to transition from a contracted service provider within the second column there to an in-house city-managed program, which is represented in the third column, which in its totality will be the next fiscal year. It's important to note, however, that the contract that was, that was, the contractor was going to be providing, it was a program that offered modified offerings only due to the pandemic, and it was for a four-day-per-week program. So it was a modified program, hence the lower cost. The city going forward will provide post-pandemic or a seven-day-per-week program, which is reflected in the third column. This is actually a sneak preview for next year's, of next year's fiscal year aquatics program budget. The last column, or the variance column, is the anticipated net general fund increase from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. Oh, and there's notes there if you'd like to take a moment to read the asterisks and comments. If you have any questions, we can visit those later as well. Back to the appropriation. This slide is a summary of the budget appropriation needed to fund the program for the remainder of this fiscal year, or as the second column is labeled, the first half of the 2022 summer season. As you are aware, our aquatic seasons run and cross over two fiscal years because they run June through July. So an appropriation of $53,516 for the expenses must be approved, and offsetting revenues are estimated at $14,458, and this will hopefully result in a net general fund support for this, the remainder of this fiscal year only, for the program of approximately $38,948. The last slide here represents the additional impact of bringing the program back in-house, which is an increase to the FTE for the Department of 1.2 full-time equivalents. We will need to reinstate two part-time aquatics positions to this part-time salary schedule. That would be for water safety instructors and lifeguards. And then the, it should be noted that the lifeguard position hourly rate will be adjusted to reflect the $15 minimum wage increase. That concludes the presentation. Myself and Director Chung here are available for any questions that you might have to clarify anything within the presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Romy, any questions?
Yes, I do, and I wanted to just thank you at the outset, Director Johnson, as well as Director Chung, on the thoroughness, and I appreciate also the additional work on the slides that you presented today to get a bigger picture, understanding of the finances for this, just so we can compare to what would have been had we stayed. I think the community didn't want that, and certainly we didn't, but it's good to know that we're in the same ballpark.
Yeah, you're welcome.
My question is, because this talks about a five-day-a-week program potentially for this summer, and so I'm wondering, but it may go to seven days?
Right. If we have the staff, yeah. We hope to, because we know, we talked about a labor shortage within, you know, the aquatics sector, yeah, as well as across business sectors, but specifically in the aquatics area.
So that's a matter of then finding, I'm sorry, interrupted you, staff.
Yeah. If we are able to expand back to, like, offering a program at historic levels, which would be a more robust seven-day-a-week program this 2022 summer season, that would be the goal, but it would really be dictated by our recruitment and able to retain aquatic staff.
Great. Thank you. That was, that was my, just want to clarify the reasoning and that it might flex upward, but we're hoping to get at least a five-day, which would be, and then my question related to that is, would that be a weekday-only program? And probably not the weekends, or do you even foresee, if it is a five-day, what?
You know, again, the goal would be, and I think we added, we included it in the staff report, is we do have weekday and weekends, so, you know, it'll all be dictated. We will expand the program based on the number of lifeguards and instructors that we can retain.
All right, and I wanted to commend you also for putting this together in such a expeditious way. I think the community is strongly behind the swim program, and I really appreciate and understand that took a great deal of time and effort recently.
Well, that's why we're here, and we're excited to bring it back in-house and to bring it up to the level of quality that the community deserves.
Thank you.
Although, questions?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Tol?
Just a quick question. The revenues in your presentation are only the direct revenues and don't include any percentage of other programs that use the pool, for example, our summer programs at the park when they come over and use the pool?
No.
Those, okay, thank you.
Those are straight user fees.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have just two quick questions. So looking at your appropriation summary, and you're showing the first half of the summer season, even though it moves into the next fiscal year, would it be correct in presuming the entire summer then would be about $80,000 that would come from the general fund? Maybe that's for Director Chung. I'm looking at the appropriation summary slide that takes us through June 30, and I guess I'm looking to confirm the general fund support is a little under $40,000. So would we be correct in presuming for the full summer season, which goes into the next fiscal year, that that would take us close to $80,000?
The reason I'm hesitant is because I believe that it's going to cost more than $80,000, but I don't have that figure in front of me.
And the reason that it might be more than double, just so we can have a clear understanding of what we're looking at. Take your time.
Just discussing with the directors, because the total cost for the summer, we do know that it's approximately about $143,000. It was part of that slide when you saw that earlier, and so that's trying to look at that regardless kicking off the program, getting it going again in-house. We're looking at probably general fund support of close to a total for the summer, probably a little more than $80,000, probably close to $90,000.
Okay.
But then that also, the director also mentioned, Kathy mentioned that we might increase the level of time from four, five, to even seven days a week. So that's why it's a moving target. But for, when we present the budget next, for the budget study session coming up in April, we'll have that figure for you. So you'll be able to see a total aquatics program that council approved for next year.
Thank you. And the revenue that is projected there, that is based on the set cost to participants that we used last year?
I don't know if it was, last year was not a good benchmark for us.
That's right.
Yeah, it's probably more historic levels from 2018, 19.
Is there room to have a minimal but not worrisome increase for participants?
I think, I think we approached this year pretty conservatively as we come back from the pandemic to, in terms of our estimated revenues. We hope to restore the program as well as its credibility for our learn-to-swim participants, private lessons, group lessons. We're in a recovery mode, so the revenues are somewhat conservative.
So not necessarily looking at the overall revenues, but the cost to participate?
Yeah, the fee, like changing the fee structure.
Is there a possibility of a minimal but not worrisome increase in the fee structure?
You know, I think it requires a little bit more of a fee study to see how we compare, sorry, how we compare. I would hate to just, you know, and I don't know enough about the fee schedule to date, honestly, to say, when was the last time we raised our fees? And are we due to raise fees?
And the only reason I'm asking is we're getting close to $100,000 subsidy, and should there be additional programs? That would be great, but it may tie into my next question somewhat. Earlier, you expressed concern. It wasn't so much about getting the lifeguards as it was in getting those management positions. Do you have a better feel of being able to fill those at this point?
Unfortunately, no, but we do know from the state conference that was attended by a REC manager last week that across the state, there is an absolute shortage of aquatics, entry-level aquatics professionals in that job class, those job class areas, as well as swim instructors and lifeguards. It's a problem across the state.
Do we have, in an attempt to try to keep it, I guess maybe I'm answering my own question, but do we have a Plan B to dig deeper, or is it just not really looking?
Well, we, our first, our first goal is to recruit very strategically and aggressively in the San Gabriel Valley. We are offering an incentive program, which hopefully will set us apart from other communities that incentivize staff to join us, and if they stick with us the entire summer, there is a little bonus at the end.
And that's wise, and that's the lifeguards, though, right?
Right.
So is there any way that we might, in view of what sounds like sort of bleak news, is there any way we can dig a little deeper for those supervisory positions?
Yes, you will hear a little bit more about that in the budget presentation for the department, which would incentivize as we build that team. These are not positions we would be interested in turning over every single year. We would love to recruit and, like I call, an entry-level recreation professional who, who aspires to have a career within the aquatics industry, but we would want to retain them. So the proposal in our budget presentation for next year is for that recreation supervisor position to be a year-round permanent position. So we don't have to lose the continuity of that, of that staffing between seasons. And we would be, you'll be learning more about a new special event proposal that my friend passed on my liaison's last week, that that would give, during the off-season, we need some additional support for that large community event, as well as to build our volunteer, special event volunteer corps. So some additional work in the off-season, but that would incentivize our ability to recruit for that rec supervisor position.
Thank you for the detailed information. There may be some other questions from council. Now, let's move to the public. Do we have anyone wishing to take comment at this point?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to bring it back for discussion from the council. Councilwoman Shepard Romy, any discussion?
No, I'm in support of this change. I'm bringing it back in-house. I'm hoping that we do have some, I know the REC department staff is familiar with the program in past years, and so we have some good experience in-house of, and I look forward to then supplementing that with a new position that you're describing, as well as then recruiting the entry level or whatever, lifeguarded instructors from our local residents. I think there will be an interest, and I'm hoping that that will, word will spread as we approve this and move forward in the community, and that you will get an adequate amount to have a full program. But I appreciate the efforts that you've put forward, and I strongly support, I think this is money well spent in our community because most of us, it's near and dear to our health, heart, either our children learned there, or even lifeguarded there, or instructed there, and it is truly a great tradition in our community. So I appreciate that we are doing that, and you're spearheading this in a very appropriate and well-thought-out way. So thank you. I would strongly support this.
Councilmember Udi?
No, I think this is something the community has an interest in.
Okay, Vice Mayor Tol?
I'm in favor, but thank you.
Okay, and I feel the same. Do I have a motion?
I move to, one, reinstate the aquatic section of the Community Services Department, two, approve a resolution number R-22-14 approving the updated 2022 salary schedule, and three, amend the city's fiscal year 2021-22 budget as noted in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tol?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, approval of an ordinance updating public nuisance and other codes. I understand city manager Marlowe would like to have some thoughts shared before moving on to city attorney Montez.
Yes, this is my morning for extra remarks. I apologize for that. So what's in front of you today is a first reading on an ordinance related to tightening up our code enforcement provisions. For the last several years, you know full well that we've come to you almost every year requesting some sort of enhancement to our code enforcement program so that we can conduct that program the way that you and the community would like to see occur. We unfortunately have seen a lot of turnover in our code enforcement officers, and we have not been able to, I think, achieve the progress that we had hoped to see. The slight silver lining in all of that turnover is that I've had the opportunity to conduct many exit interviews with those people and get a sense of what's driving them to leave to go to other agencies in terms of code enforcement. And several things came out loud and clear, which I have shared with you previously in writing. But one of the things that came out was that the state of our municipal code is extremely problematic, that there is not a cohesive, coherent structure for our code enforcement provisions, and also that there are tools missing from the toolbox. So as a result So as a result of that, with the previous community development director's departure, I took the opportunity to have a conversation with our new city attorney, and see if there was something that might be able to be done. And so city attorney Montez and his attorneys have been doing some excellent work over the last few months to try to prepare for you a comprehensive code enforcement ordinance update that gives us as many tools as possible, and enables us to be as proactive as possible. So we are offering this to you today in the hopes that perhaps it hits the mark. And if it doesn't, what we are hoping is that you will give us feedback today on what to include additionally, what to change, so that we can give our code enforcement officers the tool that they need to do the jobs that we all want them to do. So thank you for your several years of support on this item, and we hope that you are pleased with the work that's been done so far. And I'm happy to turn it over to city attorney Montez.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, the goal of code enforcement is compliance with the city's municipal code. And in most instances, compliance is achieved just through contact from code enforcement staff with a resident or property owner. However, there are instances when that does not work. And typically, the more tools that are available to achieve compliance, the better off the city is. Also, it gives code enforcement flexibility to utilize different tools depending upon the particular situation, the particular property owner, and the particular tenant that may be involved. The four primary enforcement tools that are used in code enforcement are administrative citations. Those are issued by city code enforcement personnel, and they're essentially tickets. There's an administrative appeal process if somebody wants to avail themselves of that, but otherwise, it's an opportunity to issue a citation that will identify the violation and hopefully achieve compliance. Escalating from there is the opportunity for criminal prosecution, either as a misdemeanor or infraction. There's also the opportunity for nuisance abatement, which can be a civil lawsuit that involves greater expense, greater effort, but also the opportunity for cost recovery. And then administrative abatement, which is sort of an abridged nuisance abatement process. We've taken a look at the code and in the few months we've been here, and we are suggesting some changes specifically that would enable the city to utilize any and all of the available tools to obtain compliance for any of the violations of the code that was not previously available in the city's code. Update some of the fine amounts as a, by state law. Add the statutorily required attorney's fees language for recovery and nuisance actions that wasn't in your code. Clarify that owners are subject to enforcement for the actions of tenants. Add processes for recovery of costs and fees. Expand the list of public nuisances in the code. Revise the procedures regarding the designation of a hearing officer for administrative abatement proceedings. Update and revise the procedures for collecting abatement costs, and provide for summary abatement, as I indicated. I would, your city manager described this as a comprehensive update. I would describe it as an iterative update. We've tried to get the tools in place right now, but we understand that in continuing to interact with code enforcement staff, and as situations evolve in the field, there will from time to time be situations where code enforcement staff realizes that the language in the code is not precise or specific enough to address the situation on the ground. And that's an opportunity to periodically update the code and tighten up some of those provisions as they are encountered. It's also an opportunity for the city council to provide priorities and issues to code enforcement staff and the city attorney's department, so that we can try to address those in code revisions if necessary. So having said all of that, this is a first crack. If the council has comments, I'm happy to address them. And this is ready for first reading tonight, or this morning, sorry. If, if there are substantive changes that you would like to make, we can certainly bring it back for a first reading at the next meeting instead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start with questions from council, please. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Udi, questions?
No questions. Thank you for your work.
Vice Mayor Tal, questions?
No questions.
I have one. I know with nuisance, historically, it's been a pretty long bar, if you will, before it reaches that point. So it would continue to be a planning commission process as it is now, correct?
No, I, I'm not sure what planning commission process you're referring to in terms of nuisance. If we were going to abate a nuisance, there would be a notice that was provided. If it was an exigent circumstance, we would give a short leash. And if it was not corrected, we would then move forward with seeking an abatement warrant from the court to allow the city to undertake the cleanup. If it's not as exigent, then you're talking about the filing of a civil nuisance abatement action. That's a court action.
Okay, so perhaps the process has changed. I remember while serving on the planning commission, we had to declare a property a nuisance. And that may have changed since, because it, it seemed like those were quite rare, when in many cases, there were a number of properties around town that would have qualified.
Sorry, you're jogging my memory. I do think that we made a change to that process that streamlined it and gave the community development director the authority to do that. I'm, I'm going to search through my notes, but I think we did that.
The, the current version of the code that we're working from would have that hearing, that public nuisance hearing, not in front of the planning commission, but rather in front of the community development director. We've actually suggested you change that to the city manager or designee. It's a little odd for the community development director, who's going to be the person indicating it's a nuisance and sending the notice of the nuisance, to also be the hearing officer. We want to escalate it to level, but going all the way up to the planning commission is cumbersome.
Yes, and, and that's encouraging to hear. So with that, hopefully, what it takes to get there will not be as demanding as it has been to get to the planning commission. The ones I'm familiar with over the past five years are few, and they have been extremely severe. So can that be spelled out? And I'm, I'm not sure exactly how, but in more detail, no, it doesn't have to be extreme. It just has to be bad to...
So any violation of the code, with these revision, any violation of the code is deemed to be a public nuisance?
That's really helpful. Is there lay, additional lay wording that can make that clear for residents? Because most people know that this hasn't really been followed in town unless it has been really severe, or is the wording the best that can be done for residents, or a lay reader, if you will?
So I think, I think that the, the language in the code is, is going to be very clear. If you look at page 149 of your agenda packet, for example, there are sections, for example, T would indicate...
I think on some of those, that might be 148, where you start with any building.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, any building structure that violates or fails to comply with any applicable approval, permit, license, entitlement, or, or any of that stuff, is, that's part, that's defined to be a nuisance. So failure to comply with any permit or condition of approval, that's going to be a nuisance.
So again, as, as a layperson, the process, and this is helpful, having all of this detail. So I, reading it as a layperson, how would I know that, and I see what, what would qualify, but how would I then know who my hearing officer would be, or what the hearing process would be in terms of what is now?
Correct. So then the first step in the process, if we were going with a nuisance abatement process, and, and again, that's, that's a pretty elevated process. You would want to start with a notice of violation first, or an administrative citation first, the lowest level, to see if you can achieve compliance. If you're escalating up to an administrative hearing process, you're going to get a, the first thing that the property owner would receive would be a notice that would outline the violation, outline the determination by the community development director that it's deemed to be a public nuisance, spell out what their appeal rights are, and indicate they have a limited time to correct the situation, or to request a hearing. And if they don't request the hearing, then they've got to get that situation cleaned up within that timeframe. So it's all going to be spelled out in the news.
And you'd like to my final question. I'm very excited about this, because I think things have gone too far on too many properties. What method, and this may not be for you to answer, but rather the city manager, what method would we use to make sure that the community knows that this process has changed?
One of the things that you'll see in the operating budget is some money set aside that we're going to be asking you for to do more informational mailers to the public. We, hopefully, you've seen over the last couple of years, our, our branding and engagement efforts have been increasing, and we think that we're getting good input from the community about that. The next step is to use that effort to do informational mailers about a variety of things. We've talked here about issues related to trees, code enforcement would certainly be it. We'd like to be able to put something comprehensive together. The code is not necessarily designed to be a user-friendly, layperson writing document, but the idea of engagement materials are supposed to be that, and that would be our intention.
Okay, and thank you again for item T. That answers a lot of questions. I see no public here. Do we have any?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can, can I open up questions?
Yes.
I'm, the discussion brought to mind the issue that we have a number of homes, or properties, I should say, that are owned by corporate entities. And I know that you deal briefly in here in definitions, I believe, starting on page 140 to 141, of the responsible person, which you impart, you know, you try to define a number of different ways, because it, we're trying to encompass both any person who's at the property who creates the nuisance, so to speak, as well as the owner. But I am concerned that we don't, I don't know if this is enough to include a corporate structure, should it be owned by an LLC, or not have anybody, et cetera. And I think increasingly, we're going to look at it with banks and other investment vehicles being driven by investments in real property. So I don't know if there's something, I was concerned about the definition here, because that may become an issue. We might have a renter in there, but the real party at hand that we have to come after would be of a corporate nature, that is.
Yes, we did not change the definition of owner. We changed the definition of responsible person, but we could certainly add to owner, which begins on page 140, I think.
Right.
Means includes any person, we could add, or legal entity.
Yeah, I think that we...
Having a legal title, too.
I think that we would need to do that, and it is very important to catch. And also, if you go to the top of page 141, it starts the term responsible person includes any person who, it should say owns, has legal rights. I don't know, that needs further, it starts with leases, rents, occupies, or has charge control possession. Anyway, I, I just ask you to look at that with that further qualification in mind. I think that will become, may become an issue in the future increasingly.
And to add to that, it probably should incur trust or trustee, although a trust is a legal entity, the trustee is the responsible person.
Right. So, so I think if you, the first sentence in, in the definition of responsible person captures owner, the second sentence captures tenant.
Okay, so that is meant to be, okay.
It's meant to be different, but certainly we could, we could say person or legal entity there as well.
Right, and I just don't know, but I, I think that, I appreciate those changes. And also then, once we make those changes, I do think when you go to, for example, Mayor Jacobowski talked about the exhibit, page 150, or you were having a discussion, for example, about nuisance abatement. And then, and then here, you don't use, now that we have a very thorough definition, we don't use responsible party. We go back to using property owners and occupants. So I would like us, once we have this thorough, all-encompassing definition, that then we use it throughout this, because this is where, if we have to take action, and unfortunately may have to, I would like to see that it would apply to all entities that are involved with the ownership of the property.
Thank you. I had the same thing underlined and failed to mention it. So I think that's a good point to bring forward.
No, you may, may want to bring it forward. There's some other small typos, but I don't think any of them are substantive misspelling and extra commas, but nothing else.
So we could pass those along. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from council before we move to the, open to the public? Okay, with that, do we have any online comment?
No, there's no request for comment.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I would like to bring it back to council, and I will start with councilwoman Shepherd-Romney. Go ahead.
I, I think those were, so I don't know if it was a question or comment, but I appreciate your adding, and as well as Vice Mayor Tal's suggestion for including trust, because it's another vehicle that we typically see in our city, and increasingly. And also to make sure that once we have such a good definition at the beginning, that we are using that responsible party language throughout the subsections that occur later, and we try to steer away from property owner, unless we're going to also define that. So those are just my concerns, and I, otherwise, I appreciate this effort. It is very encompassing, and as proactive as possible as we can be, and hopefully it will lend a more clear understanding of the process, even for our residents as we go forward, once we've done this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No, thank you for helping us clean this up. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Tal?
I agree with both my previous speakers. Thank you.
Thanks, that's it. Thank you. Yes, I think this should be a great help for our staff and for the aesthetics of our community. With that, do I have a motion?
I move to introduce for first reading by title only, and waive further reading, ordinance number O-22-1389, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Marino, California, amending chapters 1.04, 1.06, and 8.02 regarding public nuisances, administrative citations, and enforcement of code violations, and direct staff to agendize the ordinance for a second reading and possible adoption at a, at the city council's next regular meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
May I just ask, I think I interrupted before we got an answer on public comments, and I just wanted to make sure we did get public comment. Did we do it? Okay. I can't remember the order. Sorry about that. Thank you.
No, we, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tal?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number five, in approval of ordinance about prohibited activities in Lacy Park, including smoking. We go back to city attorney Montez again, and may we please have your report?
Yes, mayor members of the city council. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney had requested that an item be agendized to prohibit smoking in Lacy Park. That created an opportunity to look at the prohibited activity sections of the code and update those. We streamlined them. There were three or four sections that could be collapsed into one. Additionally, there were certain activities that were only allowed with the city manager's discretion, and in reviewing those, it did not seem that there was any need to actually, we couldn't think of a circumstance where the city manager would actually want to grant that discretion. So it seemed like, seemed like removing that. We also added prohibition on the use of drones in the park, smoking, as well as the use of cannabis products, and the use of amplified sound in excess of applicable decibel standards in the city's code. That one would have been picked up in other sections of the code, but we thought putting it specifically in the Lacy Park sections as well would sort of make it clear to everyone. And then we eliminated some of the restrictions on certain behaviors that just wouldn't be enforceable today under recent case law. With that, there is one correction that I do need to make. It's on page 164, under N. With regard to fireworks and explosives, previously that was prohibited unless the city manager granted permission. Since we eliminated the city manager ability to grant permission, they are now flat out prohibited. I'm anticipating the city may still want to do the Fourth of July fireworks show, so I would suggest we do need to add to the end of N, this provision shall not apply to city events. And with that, it's ready for your consideration today.
Thank you very much for the work on this. Councilmember Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Romy?
No questions. Thank you for the catch, though, on the change. We would like fireworks for the Fourth of July.
Vice Mayor Tol?
I just have a question under the smoking, because we call it smoking. And people may stop at that point and say, okay, I could do, I could use a vape. So although it defines in there, and I, we don't have to knock people over the head, it, it says in here that it, you're prohibiting smoking or use of a lighted or heated cigarette, cigar or pipe, or any other lighted or heated tobacco or plant product intended for inhalation, whether smoking natural or synthetic in any manner or any form. Smoking includes the, the use of an electronic smoking device that creates an aerosol or vapor. So vaping is, is forbidden i- in any manner, any form. Then you go down there and you define tobacco product, and tobacco product includes chewing tobacco and snuff. Are you saying here that that is prohibited? You can't throw a plug in at the park? Or are you saying you can't smoke the, or vape the chewing tobacco or snuff?
For clarification, it's, the way it's worded right now, I would, I think it creates that ambiguity. So if you are concerned about the use of chewing tobacco, then I think we should eliminate that from the definition of tobacco product, because most people don't smoke chewing tobacco.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and you don't smoke snuff.
Right.
So as long as those two are, are limited, it, it makes sure that it's not ambiguous.
Okay.
Anything further?
No.
Okay.
But I'd like to, I've never seen anybody use a hookah at the park, but.
They could.
Well, it will never happen.
Yeah, no, you won't.
Okay, I have just a few quick ones, along with fireworks. Also, item Q, alcohol, that would be on the Fourth of July, where we have a vendor selling alcohol, and perhaps even residents bringing, I'm sorry.
Also, the car show.
Okay, so.
Benefits that at the park?
Then what we may need to do is make some kind of provision for special events as designated in a certain way.
Yes, I, I have language for that as well. So I can have, the provision shall not apply to city events, added to both of those, and the provision shall not apply to, just change it to say the provision shall not apply to city events, whereas otherwise allowed pursuant to permit issued under, and then I have the two chapters in the code that allow special events and events in the park. It's chapter 16, article 8, and chapter 17, article 3.
That includes the permitted ones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item, and I, again, if this is allowable, I'd like to include it under our domestic animals. No domestic animals shall be allowed in the park in areas marked by, as such. Are we allowed to add to that, that cleanup shall occur when there is animal waste or something for the animals that come to the park? So that, that would give us teeth if somebody doesn't clean up?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And then the last item.
Depends where they throw it afterwards, I guess.
Restrooms. I think we're starting to see in general in society some concerns about gender-neutral restrooms. So is there another way that we can address no person over the age of five? Just to keep us in a legally good place and to also do what would be right?
So that language obviously has not been changed. That's the current language in your code. Yes, we could come back with that, excuse me, yes, we could come back with some language to address that.
I just really wouldn't want to have that be another item that could draw public attention and take us on to other areas.
Yes, another option would be to simply pursue this ordinance right now and explore another amendment in the future, because I, I'm anticipating that there are other, I haven't checked your whole code to see if there's other provisions dealing with restrooms at public facilities or anything else.
Okay, that would be helpful to pursue, and I think I've covered my questions. Okay, do we have anyone wishing?
May I just get back to, under the intoxicating beverages or drugs, when you make that change, drugs are at all times, controlled subs, or drugs at all times are illegal. Alcohol beverages are allowed, or, I just want to make sure that there's no confusion. You don't have someone showing up at the San Marino Motor at the Fourth of July saying, hey, look, I could do a line here, you know?
Anything further?
No.
Okay, public comments? Anyone wishing to speak on this?
There are no requests for comments.
Then I will bring it back to council, Councilmember Udi. Anything further you'd like to discuss on this?
No.
Councilmember Shepard Romy, anything further?
No.
Vice Mayor Tol?
No, thank you.
Okay, and may I, I do not have anything further. May I have a motion, please?
I move to introduce for first reading by title only ordinance number O-22-1388, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Marino, California, amending chapter 17.02 of the San Marino Municipal Code pertaining to restrictions on activities in Lacy Park, including smoking and direct staff to agendize the ordinance for a second reading and possible adoption at the council's next regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tol?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving to item six, discussion of non-monetary donations policy. Director Chung, may we please have your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council. I'll be brief. Currently, for the city's current pot donation policy, it really focuses on the monetary side of the policy and the accounting of the donations. I am planning to come back to council in a future meeting for more of a robust and detailed monetary donation policy. But the staff report before you is really, initially today is whether we want to have a formal, non-monetary donation policy. And staff is really looking towards City Council for direction on whether to formulate a non-monetary donations policy, and if so, what criteria that the city should use in determining when to accept or when to decline items, and who or what body should be making those decisions. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
And thank you for the inclusion of the other policies and information from other cities. At this point, let's move it on to questions from council. Councilwoman Shepard Romy, any questions?
I guess I, I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Udi?
How many non-monetary donations does a city get in any year?
I don't have in a year, but most recently, under, at least in our current administration, what we found there was two recently was the crossbow poster in, in this particular year. And then the last item that I know of is the tree that was offered, but we did not accept due to cost of expenses of collecting, picking the tree up and also maintaining. So only two items that I know of.
Okay, and what was the motivation to bring this to council today?
I had requested it, and I have three or four areas that I'd like to bring into the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Count, Vice Mayor Tol?
No, is that, we're just deciding whether or not to discuss it. Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I have a few questions, and number one is, and this is certainly going back to donations before maybe any of us were here. So you may or may not have full information on it. I understand there have been a few issues with past donations. So is there, or was there in place an inventory tool of those donations that have been made to the city?
There was not. There were pieces, particularly with Mayor speaking of, is there were several pieces of artwork, at least as far as we know, that were accepted by previous councils and city managers that we just had no information about until the donor or loner, as it turned out, raised a concern about it. So there is, there is no inventory about anything that happened prior to my arrival. I'm only aware of two kinds of things, but that doesn't mean that there aren't others. But we know what we've accepted since then, and the only thing has been the crossbow picture.
Okay, and on that note, when we've had loners that we thought were donors, we, since this goes back in time, we gave back the item that was loaned.
Well, to be clear, we didn't actually know that they were even donated. We just, there just happened to be pictures in City Hall. They could have gotten there in any number of different ways. It only turned out, once the request came up, that we had the person indicate that they thought that they donated it for X purposes, or that they had loaned it for X purposes. But we have been corresponding with those people, and we are not in the business of, at City Hall, accepting lent items.
Okay, and do we have currently with any proposed future donations, a letter that would direct unconditional acceptance, meaning that this wouldn't be a give back, but rather, thank you very much?
We could certainly include the word unconditional. I mean, we, we have stipulated approval of the item, which means that it's ours. We can add that word in.
Okay, and then my last question is, relates to additional expenses. So there could be a few items that would have reason for refusal. Not only the expense, for example, of planting a tree, but perhaps a tree that would be very warmly donated, but would not thrive for an assortment of reasons. So is it possible that we could have to avoid future problems or hurt feelings, something that could also maybe even be pulled from one of the existing policies in other cities that could state that we may, you know, or why we would refuse?
If you want to adopt a policy, you would certainly suggest language just that you liked, and we would certainly put it in.
Okay, you had shared that sometimes it is uncomfortable when people want to offer.
It's not uncomfortable when it's something like the tree situation. I mean, in that particular situation, we were going to have to pay to get the tree to the city, and it was a significant tree that would have cost quite a lot, and then we would have had to maintain it. That's actually, that's not uncomfortable at all, but to, to have items that if the, if the question is, how would we decide whether something is valuable enough to accept? I certainly would not be willing to make that determination.
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about value as like the tree, you know, or, or something of controversy. We know that there are, for example, many statues being eliminated, and I was actually asked if the city would like one of those. So certain items like that would be of controversy.
Those would not likely be awkward.
Unless.
Unless it's a statue, Vice Mayor Tol. Yes, thank you for that. Actually, that would not be awkward at all.
That will occur after he completes his term as mayor. Okay, so any additional questions? And hearing none, any public wishing to speak on this?
There are no requests for comments.
Okay, bringing it back for discussion, Councilwoman Shepard Romy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that the policy in a general way on 199, which is the Crowell Public Library's existing policy, the top of that page, seems to me if we were to formalize anything, it could be left that we have a specific, you know, this is outlining, we retain ownership unconditionally. We don't commit to anything. I think this is kind of a thought out and generalized way to deal with it without employing our city attorney's time and making it a multi-page ordinance or that type of thing. So I encourage us to look at that page. I think their top section about gifts and donations is fairly, is enough that we could operate and still leaves the city discretion. If the city manager is not comfortable in, you know, making those calls, and I don't know what the, whether it should be within her purview, then it might be something, for example, that a public safety commission, because it might be related to parks and public works or police. We do have donations that come in regularly to our police and fire departments, and I don't want to discourage those. So I think there may be an appropriate body to do that, as well as if it's of historic nature, and it might be something, we do have a San Marino Historical Society that is active at Turner House and works very hard for record keeping and things that are designated. So it might be behoove us to get those two entities involved, should we have to make a decision. And maybe that would clear up, you know, just the area. Thanks, that's all.
Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, if we only get a couple here, I don't know if this is a problem we're trying to solve.
Well, I think the fact that most cities do have these policies, the library has theirs, I think it would behoove us to have it in place, and I think Councilwoman Shepard Romy had a good point. My apologies, Vice Mayor?
I, I agree, we do need a policy, and it has to be a little more, well, not specific, but the cities likely get different donations in the Crowell Public Library. There, I'm, I'm, think of a couple parcels of real estate, including where City Hall was located, is, was a donation, so. And we have to deal with it to avoid future litigation. I would advise we spend the time to do it now, and it's in the books, and then we move on.
Thank you. And, and similar to what the Vice Mayor is stating, you know, that has become a topic of controversy today. Different statues or figures or whatever, and as I said, I was offered to pass to the city a statue that was taken down from another location. So I think having some type of policy with general, general guidance is a good thing to have in place. So since this is not a voting item, do you feel that the general direction being offered is helpful?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, good.
Okay. So then I would like to move to item one of the special meeting agenda. And I believe we have that as a note, a separate document, rather. So may, this is the resolution for interim Community Parks and Public Works Director, and may we have a presentation from Director Marlowe?
Yes, I will keep it brief in the interest of time. As we've discussed today, Parks and Public Works Director, City Engineer Michael Throne, is leaving us next Friday. This is obviously an incredibly critical position for our organization and the standard in situations like this to appoint an interim to serve in that capacity. I am prepared to appoint Mr. Robert Newman as a retired annuitant into that position. The appointment in San Marino of any department head position, even interim, requires city council concurrence, and the appointment of a retired annuitant from Calpers requires a council-adopted resolution. So both of those actions are in front of you today. Mr. Newman is an incredibly well-respected city engineer and public works director in Southern California. He spent the large portion of his career with the City of Santa Clarita, where he spent almost 20 years as their director. He did serve as the director for the City of Calabasas for three years prior to Santa Clarita. He has served on numerous boards and won awards. and won awards, he is a professional engineer in the state of California, which is what we need in this position, it is really an honor that he's willing to come work with us, I have some experience way back in the early part of my career where I knew him, he is a good guy, and I think he'll be a great addition to the team. So with that, that concludes my staff report, I am happy to answer any questions, otherwise I would request that you concur in my appointment of Mr. Robert Newman as the interim Parks and Public Works Director, City Engineer, and approved resolution number R-2216, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
No, thank you for bringing this forward in an expeditious manner.
Councilmember Udi?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Talt?
I have no questions, thank you.
I have no questions, do we have any public comment?
There's no request for comment on this item.
I'd like to bring this back for discussion, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any discussion?
No, I'm in support of this.
Councilmember Udi?
No.
Councilmember Talt?
No question, no comment.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to concur in the city manager's appointment of Robert Newman as interim Parks and Public Works Director, City Engineer by approving resolution number R-2216.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to public comment, I see no one present, do we have anyone online with?
There's no one.
No one wishing to speak? Future agenda items, is there anyone here who on council would like to offer an item for future agenda?
And I did earlier here to add Metro, so I already have that written down.
Yes. Anything further? I have two other issues, are there any adjournments that anyone would like to make in honor of a person who may have passed? No, okay, and may I ask if Director Throne could just step forward for one second and bring with you, please, the passed-along book that was handed to you today? And if you could hold up the jacket on it, I think it so beautifully describes, I'm sorry, the sleeve that went over it? What the book is about? No, there's, there was a sleeve that went over the entire book.
This is the sleeve.
Oh, I can't see it, I'm sorry, and what, can you read what it says about what the book, the book is about?
Yes, Mayor, this book is titled, "The Invisible City: A Field Guide to the Hidden World of Everyday Design."
So we'd like to compliment you on the hidden city that you so beautifully assisted us in overseeing all that was beneath our roads, that we didn't know anything about, all that was hidden in many, many parts of our city, and with great appreciation for what you have offered to us for these years with the city, and we wish you well in your next endeavor, and your expertise was greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Director Throne. And can I ask that we adjourn the meeting in honor of Madeline Albright?
Absolutely. Thank you, any other adjournments? Okay, we will, I will adjourn the special meeting, and now we will recess the regular meeting to go to closed session.